Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board. Thanks for taking a few minutes' worth of time for us to kind of get things together. Just a few things. If you're here tonight for Millie's, Mattick at Millie's modification, the Valero Road subdivision, Marineway subdivision, and the White Elephant LLC, they have all been continued to our February 9th meeting, so just so that you're aware of that. Without further ado, the first thing before us tonight in terms of public hearings is Brian Ryder, which is 5:30 Mary Ann Drive. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Seeing no one. Andrew, do you just want to...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. In the staff report, you'll see that this matter has been before this board for quite some time. There's really no way to resolve this. We recommend that the board vote to deny the special permit request.
Okay. Board members, do you have any discussion on this issue? This is on, this is Brian Ryder, 5:30 Mary Ann Drive.
We're on this, this could be Mary Ann Drive, so.
No.
I thought we, Andrew, I thought we had some kind of a plan at the last meeting or the week before about this that was mimicking the box one.
This particular one does not meet that requirement. It's not a head-in-space. It's a space that straddles the line between the front yard and the road. It doesn't meet any of the requirements and...
Board members, do you have any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing, so let me at least indulge that phase of things. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application that's before us tonight? Hearing none, pleasure of the board.
Am I on this?
You're on this.
I'm a little late.
It's okay. You've been sitting in on this one for a while, though.
Brian Ryder?
Yeah, I mean...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing Andrew's done is just kind of bring us up to date about any questions the board had.
Second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those... You're opposed to the motion, sir? So let the record reflect, that's a three-to-one vote by this board to close the public hearing. And the pleasure of the board?
Motion to, you want us to deny this, right?
Correct.
Motion to deny? Do we have to make the findings for denial?
No, we will prepare that. It's really covered in the staff report.
Good.
Okay.
Motion's now made in second, a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Let the record reflect, that's three-to-one with Mr. McGlaughlin opposed. Okay, next thing...
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I want to make sure that those who voted were at all of the special permit hearings on this.
I don't believe he was.
Mr. McGlaughlin, you, did you attend all these meetings for Mr. Ryder?
I, when was the last time you attended? That's the question.
It was back when you were out.
You did, you checked, thank you. Because I have sent a note off, because there's a few of these that left really a question on it.
Thank you.
He wasn't here for all of those.
No, the staff assures me he was.
Comeby too.
That's okay. I've had, I asked staff, because I know you've missed a few meetings, asked staff just to make sure everything was copacetic as well. You're good. All right, so that closes the matter on this. Next thing before us at this point is 18-14...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but which members vote? This is a special permit?
I'm so sorry. And I apologize. I did not realize it was a special permit.
Act, act, act.
All right, so, let me do this again. I apologize. Carl, were you here for all these?
I came on board in November of 2013, and it was on, at that point, it was on, on the agendas. I don't know if it was before that as well. I wasn't before that, but I came on board.
It's been on for a while.
It was on at that time, so it's been on a long time.
For Brian Ryder?
Yes.
All four board members that can vote. So John, Mary, Linda, and...
Which alternates?
None.
Aye.
Diane wasn't here.
Because I think Diane missed two. And she didn't sign a mother rule, so.
It was before my time. That's how long it's been.
It's been since 2013.
Yeah. I came on for November of 2013.
So what happens if it's three-to-one?
Chairman, I'd request you continue this to the next meeting.
Does, because, I'm sorry, does this require a supermajority?
Yeah.
It does?
Okay.
Well, Joe can't sit either. Sylvia was the other person.
I, that's why I'm requesting we continue this.
All right, and I understand. So, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I do apologize on that, most assuredly. All right, so if the primary and secondary people are willing to rescind their vote at this point, I would suggest we still keep the public hearing open. Motion would be to continue to our meeting on February 9th.
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously at four-to-o. Thank you. Sorry for any confusion.
Did she check Cumberland Farms also?
I had put in a request to staff to do that earlier today, so we're going to have to just system...
He wasn't there for the whole entire, uh, neither.
Who he?
How?
Okay.
For Brian Ryder.
No, no, we'll continue that. We're talking about Cumberland now.
Cumberland Farms.
All four, and all been said.
Okay, thank you. You got my note from earlier today to start researching this, right?
I spoke to Wesley.
Oh, thank you, okay. I ran into Catherine earlier and asked her to make sure that this was researched.
Because I thought he was gone.
I knew there were gaps in some of these.
John was gone for the November and December, but that was all his move.
So he has, he's permissible for this, okay. Thank you. All right, so the next thing before us at this point is 18-14 Cumberland Farms Incorporated, 115 Orange Street for the applicant. Mr. Santos, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, representing Cumberland Farms, Inc. Also with me tonight is Sarah Algea, attorney for the applicant. We'd just like to briefly make a fairly quick presentation tonight, just to kind of update you on where we are with this project. Public hearing was held some months back. Subsequent to that, we went to the HDC, and not so much a reflection of this board, but the HDC had some issues with the size of the building, and especially the size of the building along Williams Street. So I've handed out, or I've given the board, there are two eight-and-a-half-by-eleven plans in your packet tonight. Those two eight-and-a-half-by-eleven colored plans are the boards, two of the boards I want to make reference to. So the board that you have to the left of me here is, was the original building as submitted, with kind of a comparison between the existing Cumberland Farms store, which is the store itself, the wood platform, and the trailer that's currently being used, with an overlay to what the proposal was for the submittal. This was the, the plan that the HDC had issues with with regard to the building size. The plan that you have in your packet is a revised building size, in which we've reduced the size of the building, and will be before the HDC tomorrow night with that particular plan. So I'm going to pull that board up, and that's the board we'll kind of talk to, talk about tonight. I'll leave this one over here for a second. So this is the downsized building with the same type of comparison, if you will, on what we had done previously. So smaller building, existing Cumberland Farms facility, and you can see the size of the building, both in width on Orange Street and length along Williams Street has been reduced. So this particular plan is in your packet. This is the current building proposal. Orange Street runs in a north-south direction, Williams Street in an east-west direction. As many of you know, Williams Street is a one, now a one-way westerly from the intersection of Orange Street. So what this proposal now will do, in addition to decreasing the size of the building, we've also addressed the major issue, I think, that was before this board when we were here, which was the issue of the loading zone. Specifically, the issue of the loading zone as it relates to Cumberland Farms's tractor-trailer that comes over the island, and for everyone, that's the, it's a modified tractor-trailer with you, if you will. It's not a standard 55-foot length, it's a smaller version, that tractor-trailer that Cumberland Farms has that they bring over the island. That's a tractor-trailer that comes to the island two times a week, set times. I think it's Tuesday and Friday, I think it comes over. So those times are fixed. We know when that tractor-trailer comes to the island. It goes to Sparks Avenue first, it then makes its way to Williams Street and unloads. And in unloading, what it does is comes up northerly on Orange Street, westerly on Williams...
And then, if you can't hear me, please let me know, I'll try it. It comes up Williams Street, it backs its way in, it parks here, and loads right now. As many of you know, right now Cumberland Farms has parking on Williams Street, parking within the Grattle area located to the west. So what we've done is we've allocated a loading area in this particular spot here, tractor-trailer would come into the site, back in, drop its back gate gear, and then load and unload the store. The parking lot has been modified so that truck can be in that loading zone, and you still have free-flowing traffic in and out of the parking area here. We've got a 22-foot wide aisle for cars to come in and out while the tractor-trailer is still in that particular area.
Loading and unloading. The reduction in the size of the building basically gave us the ability to mimic similarly what we did on Sparks Avenue, which is, there's a larger now brick area, parking area is here, there's a larger brick expansive area here as you walk into the facility. You're not right at the sidewalk and then right into the store, as we had in the original proposal. So this gives us the room to have the truck there, the gate down, free-flowing traffic in and out, and then free-flowing pedestrian traffic along the backside, or what we're going to consider the front of the store, if you will, for pedestrian traffic in and out of the store. Those particular spaces, we're going to also allocate as parking spaces when that truck is not loading. The manager will block those spaces off. He knows the trucks coming at a certain time, those spaces will be blocked off. When the truck is not there, those will be regular parking spaces. They will be utilized as regular parking spaces for a landscaper, a contractor. Somebody who has a bigger truck will now be able to come into this site and utilize these larger spaces. It could be a landscaper with a trailer on the back of his truck. It's not going to be 50 feet, it's not going to be the size of the tractor-trailer, so it gives us two parking spaces allocated specifically for contractors. That would be other than the one-and-a-half to two hours that that truck is loaded or unloaded on a weekly basis. I've also allocated a corner-rounding easement on Orange Street, which would, right now, would be this area here, in which we would grant to the town a corner-rounding easement for traffic patterns in and out of Orange Street along that end. We are also going to seek a independent traffic analysis, and again, the issue was not so much, wasn't the amount of volume of traffic here, it was traffic pattern or traffic flow within the site, and also in and out of Orange, Williams Street and Orange Street intersection. So we will, Cumberland Farms will retain a traffic consultant, will submit that report. It'll be an independent review of this plan with regard to traffic flow, traffic patterns, and the intersection itself with regard to traffic in and out. This scenario here does away with the parking, as our previous submittal did, with the parking and the backing out of cars onto Williams Street at the front of the store here. The previous plan that you had before you has already been to the Conservation Commission. It is land subject to coastal storm flowage. It's subject to the Mass Storm Auto Policy Act, because we've had to file with both the state and the Conservation Commission. The drainage component has been approved. The notice of intent has been issued in order of conditions. We still do need HDC approval, and obviously, we need this board's approval here. We, the intent here is to come back in February with a complete set of revised engineering drawings, so we don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but we would just would like a little input tonight. As we're at HDC tomorrow night, HDC will have a say in the building, they will have a say in the hardscape application, but we did want to get some kind of general feeling, because I think the biggest thing was the loading zone issue. We think we've addressed that, and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Me?
Yes, you go ahead, sorry.
I appreciate all the changes. What still concerns me a little bit, I appreciate the, the loading zone, you said there are two loading zone trailer spaces, I only see one.
Well, there's one, it's one loading zone space for the truck.
It's 14 by 35, or whatever it is.
Correct, but it would occupy two parking spaces that would be taken up when the truck is in its spot.
Okay. The other question is visibility. If people are not going to Cumberland Farms, they really come up Williams Street really fast. If that truck is in that loading zone, that close to where you come back out onto Williams Street, are you going to have visibility coming out onto Williams Street, where you can see the cars coming up from Orange Street, with the truck that close to the road layout of Williams?
Yeah, that's...
It's actually, it's actually set back here, so the truck, there's a corner around it here, and you're back into the site. The loading zone is, is here, so the truck is parked here, the car is going to be out in front of the truck, cars exiting in and out of the site. Quite honestly, you could pull a loading zone up even further into the site. Right now, it's just allocated on the low side, but based on what you're saying, it probably makes sense to pull it up to the edge of the handicap spot, and the truck would be even farther into the site.
And maybe a couple of feet into the brick area?
It could definitely go into the brick, because now we have all the space between the brick and here, it could definitely come in further this way.
That's the only thing I'm asking, is to have it relocated a little bit more north.
Yeah, the truck's about 55 feet in length, but when you drop that gate, there's about another four or five feet off the backside of that gate when it drops down, that they still need to maneuver around, so it...
This could be notched, again, we've got such an expansive area here now, this space could be allocated, it could be notched and even further.
But the only thing I'm looking for is to get it away from the exit and entrance.
Yep.
Otherwise, I think it's, it's come a long way. Now, on your site plan, I have in front of me, which I assume is the same as that one, you're still showing a loading zone interior of the...
Yeah, that's just because we've, everything that was originally designed is kind of into the background. We just, we just wanted to show it as an overlay, just so you get a sense of where everything was originally and where it is now.
So we got a before and after, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
What you'd get on the next submittal would be a stripped-down version of what this proposal is with the full engineering.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
I have two questions. One is the, the loading zone. It says it's 12 by 35. That truck that comes here, I drive a lot of trucks, and that's about 40 feet long, so there's got to be some kind of a change in either the size of the truck or the length of that loading zone. And the other, I noticed that on the new plan submitted, you have five air conditioners approved on the north side. And now, there's ten, there's five more, you're going to have 10 of them there. 10 of those make a heck of a lot of noise. How about the neighbors living next door?
Well, actually, the neighbor is the same owner as, the same owner as the Cumberland Farm. Cumberland Farms is, this is the least parcel for Cumberland Farms, it's actually owned by the Rose family. They own both, they own both.
This piece and this piece, but John, there's only five units. It's just, these were allocated on the original one, they're just going to be reallocated over here, so there's one, two, three, four, five units, that's all it will be, it's five.
Has anybody done a check on the noise value of 10 of those?
And they'll all, they'll all be screened. They are outside the zoning setback, which they're required to be. And Cumberland Farms, again, in this case here, all the units are high-efficiency units, same as the ones we used over on Sparks, and as I said...
We control this property too. We control both this property and that property.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that, that's going to be a lot of noise on them after it gets approved. If it gets approved, it's going to be, going to be heck on the neighbors, 10 of those things lining up.
There's five of them, John.
Five.
There's five.
You got 10 in all, right?
No, five.
Five.
Just five.
What are the ones in red?
The ones in red are the, are the current proposal, John. That's, this, these...
Five.
Right.
One, two, three, four, five, those are units, and then there's a screen fence along the backside over there.
The other ones are the four, tell them that.
So, John, what you've got there is you've got a plan which shows what the original proposal was and what we are now proposing.
Okay.
Kid?
Yeah.
Your favorite?
Yeah, thank you.
The proposal you brought in.
John, hang on for a second.
Five, yeah, and five, yeah.
John, where's the color? Can I take a...
No, this one's colored, because that's what I have right there. So there are five, one, two, three, four, five, and then that's the proposed building.
Okay, what happened to these five?
Those are done away with. That was the original plan, with the, and the building was bigger.
All right, um, thank you. I would still check on the length, because if you don't get that truck, at 35 feet, it could drain a 40, or 45.
Yeah, it's actually 50, John.
It's way out in there.
Yeah.
So you should check on that, do something about that.
Okay.
For the general public. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Carl?
Mr. Santos, did you take those parking spaces from 20 to 18 feet?
No.
On the west wall there?
No, we've extended, the parking lot's been extended.
Okay, so there's still 20s?
There's plenty of room here, no, they're still lined by 20 spaces. We're not asking for any waivers.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Isle width is still compliant, yep.
Board members, anything else?
Thanks, Paul, for the changes. It's been like, I feel like it's been a year since you've been here for this thing. No, that's going to work fine for the truck. It's going to work fine. Works fine now, and it's just, you know, what it's been since whenever. So, the thing is, the truck is only there twice a week for about an hour and a half, and that is it.
That's right.
It's not even really that long, so, because they do most of the business at the other store, so it'll be split, so. As far as the, did we talk, and I'm trying to remember, this has been a while since you've been here, so I kind of forgot something, but the curving, when we come through the old video, you know, the espresso-to-go thing?
Yes.
Didn't we talk about doing something with that big curb, and so those landscape trailers, when they turn left, coming in there, how that affects that, you know what I'm saying?
That little spot?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, quite honest, I mean...
Not asking for you, I don't remember what we said about an improvement and all, I don't remember if that was part of anything, I can't remember, but I know we talked about it.
Well, I hear there was questions about how that access worked, and I'm believing that. I've watched that tractor trailer make its way, I mean, the driver knows, it's the same driver that's...
No, no, they ain't, no, they're all set. That's not what I'm talking about, no, 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 no.
This way?
No, no, I'm talking about going, when you're in the parking lot of espresso-to-go, I mean, fast-forward, right?
Oh, here.
Yes, that little, there's a little, there's a tree, a little...
That's right. The concern was, because we're planning to curb, we're planning to curb Williams Street.
Right.
The concern was, that curbing Williams Street, have we restricted flow coming out of here, making that left turn coming out?
Yes, yes. You've got to make sure that, and just keep the curving low. I mean, how low are we going to put it?
Well, I intended on a six-inch curb in there, but it could be, it could be a lower curb.
Yeah.
Only because we need access from, the main access for the store will be here, but we do have to have, we have a walkway coming here and then into the front.
There should be a lot more space, because we're not going to have parking there anymore, so, but you don't...
But that's right, we did, I did need to look at that turn, that maneuver right there.
That's, and that, and then, you know, as I said, the curving height, you don't want the curving height to restrict maneuverability, you know what I mean? That's all.
No, because when he comes in here with the tractor-trailer, he makes that street wide, and then he works his way around them.
Well, that trail is fine. When it pulls in there, that from, from the rotary way, because they go to the other store first, easy to make that turn.
Yeah.
The wheels are all the way forward on that trail.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just concerned about that little thing in there, how those trucks come in, all those landscape guys drive down Cherry Street, turn left, go into, kind of sneak through, and then go into Cumberland, you know?
Yeah.
But, anyway, okay, thank you.
Board members, anything else? Anything from staff? Mr. Pashy?
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that Paul did a great job describing the loading and unloading process. I would just recommend that for your next board meeting, that he submit that as a little narrative. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, that, that actually, that will be part of the independent review from the traffic consultant.
I think he did a great job explaining, and I just wanted it to be part of the record. Thank you.
Mr. Santos, just, just one thing real quickly. I realized at our last meeting, we, we as a board get real used to doing major site plan reviews, so I, I have to apologize if we got a little carried away with a few things, like looking way further beyond the site in terms of, of other things that could be done in the area. I just have to say, I think that, first of all, I'm sorry that happened, that we, we got a little excessive.
Yeah.
I think we lost sight of the fact, this is really a minor site plan review, but the other thing I have to say is thank you for listening to us, because I think what you've managed to come up with here really will work well. So we, we, I, I for one appreciate it, and I, I think the rest of the board, I'll, I'll be bold enough to say...
Okay, we appreciate it. I mean, really, and it is a minor site plan, I mean, really, the reason we were here is because of the formula business exclusion district issue.
Correct, correct.
And that's really all it was, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's a store, it's a new facility, everyone has to live with it. I mean, Sparks have completely kind of changed as we went along, and at the end of the day, I think it worked out fine, so it's no problem.
Yeah.
None at all.
Thank you. This is a public hearing at this point, so if anyone would like to comment on this, please come forward to the microphone, identify yourself for the record. Not seeing anyone?
We have to continue.
Yeah, we should continue this.
Motion to continue to February 9th?
Second.
That motion's made in second, in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you go on...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question, a procedural question, just to put my mind at ease? I noticed that a number of things that you're continuing have action deadlines that expire prior to your next meeting. I'm assuming you have extensions of those deadlines from the applicants? Okay, good, thank you.
Look, check, thanks for bringing that up.
It just makes me nervous.
No, thank you.
Well, Millie's is up on Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm sure staff will make the appropriate contacts.
Wait, open some before then, so's the Marineway.
Thanks. We're really not in the public phase, so I'm going to be a little cautious about where this, I hope this is a point of order.
It is a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
It's on the Valero Plan that is listed here as being continued into February 9th.
That's correct, ma'am.
However, the action date is January.
We just talked about that.
Exactly, I heard you say that, but my understanding is that a continuance has to be voted on by the board in an open hearing.
That's breaking news to me at this point. Usually, we've allowed applicants to be able to bring us extensions in the past.
Yeah.
It's up to the, I mean, it's up to the applicant to do it.
No, she's talking about continuing, the HDC contained, votes to continue stuff. She's saying that we have to vote to continue to the direct. We've never done that.
As far as I know, that's not a standardized policy procedure.
What's that based on?
Pardon?
We've never done it here.
Yes. Where are you, where are you siding from? Because I think we're all a little perplexed. I mean, because the HDC does it, doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's a derogatory policy.
Right, we don't do it here.
Right.
I see, thank you.
Thank you.
But we do need to get the extensions.
Yes. Okay, so the next thing before us is 1-15 Brendan Johnson. That application has been asked to be withdrawn at this point, so I would ask the board to consider that withdrawal.
I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal of Brendan Johnson at 2 Hamlin Road without prejudice.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that? Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes unanimously. Next thing before us at this point is going to be Wind Horse Ventures LLC on 5A Salros Road for the applicant.
Burr Tucker, for the record. Nothing really to add. I think that the second curb cut that we're requesting, second driveway, fits into the neighborhood. Number six directly across the, the road is a, is a double, a double driveway. The only reason that we're here is that the existing driveway to the property is a common drive to the two properties. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Board members, any discussion on this?
Yeah.
Anything from staff at this, oh, did you have something, Linda?
Yeah. And I, this is no surprise to Burr, but I have an issue with opening up this with part of the restriction for that subdivision.
No, this is, this is Salros Road.
This is Salros.
Oh, they were on Salros, I keep thinking about your other ones.
Yeah.
Salros, I don't have an issue with, I know that this particular, this particular lot really well. You're coming in for the other one, I assume.
Again?
The other one is hanging around here somewhere.
Yep, that's the way it is. Yep.
Yeah. This is, I don't have an issue with this. The only thing I see compared to your lot that you have now is that the curb cut is very wide. Has staff looked at the size of the curb cut for this one?
Yes, and it falls within the new commercial width requirements that were adopted at last year's town meeting.
Yeah, what's that width? Is it 15?
It's up to 30 for commercial properties.
Okay. That's the only thing. Otherwise, it's fine.
Board, staff, did you have anything else? No?
Oh, here's the other one.
Not hearing anything else from the board with staff, I'm sorry.
Not crazy, there's the other one right there.
We'll get there. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Not hearing any comments at this point, pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's now made in seconded. Mr. Fortune, you're being activated for this as well? That motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes unanimously.
Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second to that? Motion's now made in second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next application is 3-15, which is Robert A. Stanton and Donald J. Stanton at 16 India Street for the applicants. Mr. Green.
For the record, Richard Green, for the Beach Nominee Trust. Bob Stanton, Jimmy Stanton, Christine Stanton. And it's an application for a second driveway on an oversized lot, a very busy downtown street. India Street, as you know, is one way into town. It's directly opposite the thrift shop. There's a lot of traffic on that street. Presently, the owners and their guests are in the position of frequently having to park one car on India Street. The driveway that we propose would be on the westerly end of the property, and there is already a yellow line in that location. I did go to the DPW and obtained a curb cut permit from them on the basis that it would not be taking away any parking on the street, on the contrary, would take one car off the street.
Thank you. Board members? Yeah, Carl?
Mr. Green, I visited the site today, and to me, it looks like a very simple solution to this, and I may be able to be corrected by anybody in this room, but I'm gonna propose it. Here's what I think we should do. I think we should move the dedicated drop-off space about six or eight feet toward the core district, and put a parking place in front of it, on the yellow line in front of it, in front of the, the black horse assemblies. And that'll clear up enough room for this proposed parking place.
Are you talking about a dedicated parking space on the street?
Yes, in addition to the drop-off space that exists already. Put, put that forward, move it forward toward town.
Yeah.
And then have the town put another parking place in there. So you can now build your secondary cut, and the dedicated drop-off space won't be in the way, because it'll be moved six or eight feet toward Center Street. You follow?
Yes, we actually hadn't anticipated moving the drop-off spot at all. We don't need to move it.
Well, I think you might wanna reconsider that, because I looked at it pretty carefully. It's pretty close to the, to the brick and the U bushes there. If you moved it six or eight feet ahead, and then I think in addition for more parking for everybody, I think there's room there for another dedicated spot where the yellow line goes down to the, to the two-spot area on that property. There's room in front of the house for another spot, as well as a drop-off spot. If you move everything down six or eight feet, then you can have your cut and back out and pull away. If that's possible, I mean.
I don't know.
I could be corrected by staff.
Is this board in the business of moving parking spots? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. That's just, that's just an idea that I wanna put out there.
I'm still confused as to whether you're talking about putting a spot on the street or in the property.
For the record, just move this down. Put one here in front of it.
I don't care, it's very, it's not happening.
You have your access. See that? Move this down. And then put one in front of it. You have two parking places, one for a drop-off and one for someone to park. You still have access to this. You have room for this. See how close that line is?
Yeah, yeah. But you're, you're, you're in favor of having this spot?
I am, personally, I am, yes. If you move this down.
I'm not.
And then put another one there, you have two. You have one for a drop-off and one for a parking place, and you still have room here to access this double and access a single.
I don't wanna waste a lot of time on this.
Yeah, that kinda goes beyond what we are looking for.
It's, it's just a po, it's just a possible solution. That's all I'm saying.
It's an additional solution. And now you have two extra blocks.
Right, on the street, and you have a spot next to the house that you're trying to get.
Yes, we wanna take one car off India Street, one of our cars off India Street, and you're proposing putting an additional spot on India Street.
Correct. Along with the dedicated drop-off spot for the hospital thrift shop.
Yes.
So there'll be one for them.
Not be opposed to that at all.
And one for the general public in front of them.
As a matter of, as a matter of, of practice, that yellow line is, is kind of a joke.
Right, that's all I have to say.
People park there all the time.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
I am not in favor of this. I don't see the purpose of this. We're not in the habit of granting a second curb cut for a third car downtown on a really narrow, very busy street. Not happening, as far as I'm concerned. You have a double car space right now on the east side of that property with a very substantial yard. There isn't any reason why they can't extend the driveway further into their lot and double park front to back like everybody on Main Street does. Like most of the people on, on India Street that actually have a parking space, or Hussey Street, or any of the other streets downtown. They park front to back, they double-load those parking areas, they're this wide. You actually have a side-by-side, which is fairly sizable for downtown. There's no reason why they can't go in further. I'm not, me, not happening. And I don't understand why they think they need another parking space crammed into the west side of that structure when they have two on the other side of the structure. It's not my problem, they got three cars downtown.
It's more the guests and service people?
Don't care. They're under the same rules as everybody else that don't have guests and don't have service people. They need to double-load that parking space and run it further into the yard with brick or whatever, I forget, I think it's brick on the west, on the east side, and double-load it so they can pull all the way up, so they have space up there. But I for one am not given another curb cut, I don't see the justification for it, and, and India Street is already a mess.
The problem with, with, with doing that is that you destroy the trees that are on the, on the, what, the east side of that? Of that double lot?
Well, then they just, they just don't have it. If there are town trees, they can't touch them anyway. But I'm not interested in giving them.
They're not town trees, but they would be destroyed by cutting that further out.
I'm not interested in giving them another space on the east side, west side, not at all. A second curb cut, I can't justify it. If they could come in off of Rose Lane, or if they'd been on the other side and they were coming off like the hospital thrift shop does off of Hussey, that'd be different. That makes sense, because the thrift shop has one on both ends.
It does.
And the guy next door, I think, has one. But this is on that side of the street with a very large yard.
It does, there could be a second dwelling on that, on that property.
Whatever, but that's... That's my opinion at the moment.
Sort of giving your pads away.
No, we're not here for a second dwelling. We're not here for a second dwelling. We're here for another parking spot.
That's the point of the space, there's a lot of space there. I went down there, looked at it today.
It's a huge, yeah, it's, it's a nice, big yard, it's, it's very pleasant. It would be a real shame to cut into it, you know, more. And it'd be a shame to lose those trees.
Common sees stack parking more and more, you know?
And they can have one stack parking, they don't have to run both, double-load both sides. They can run one stack parking. But they've got plenty of room to do it. Like 99% of the people in town don't have that kind of room.
Carl?
If you have stacked parking in the worst-case scenario, and you had four vehicles there stacked down on the east side, the, the vehicles next to the street have to back out into India Street to let the other vehicles out. That's a tie-up. So, why not just put three right along? Two there and one on the other end.
We can't justify two curb cuts, Carl, it's not what we normally do on in-town lots at all. I don't know another one that actually has two with just frontage. I can't even think of another one that's got on east and west or north and south of the house.
It kinda ties in visually. If you look across the street there, you've got driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway.
And we do here. But you're gonna have driveway, house, driveway on the same lot.
It's a very long lot, by the way.
You're making a good case, but I'm not going there.
Board members, anything else?
Do you wanna go look at it? Continue? But go look at it with a particular view to how this might work. We like to back into our parking spaces.
Good.
Right? I know, right? And I tried it, I can get my 18-foot pickup truck in that spot, you know, without impinging on that parking space that's, that's there right now.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Question to Mr. Boers.
Yeah.
Mr. Boers, is it legal, would it be legal if he took the two cars that are parking now existing, on the left one or right one, and use stack parking? Can you do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I have two questions for you.
Okay.
Just for the record, repeat why we would do this.
Cause you're taking.
Just so I'm, I'm clear.
Cause you're taking a car off the street downtown.
Okay, all right.
You're effectively, you're effectively adding a downtown parking space.
Okay. All right, just, will you hold on?
No, you're not.
I have the floor.
There's a yellow line there, so you're not doing that.
I have the floor, thank you. So, all right, you would be essentially removing a downtown parking space.
No, no, you'd be adding.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, you'd be adding.
Adding a downtown parking space.
My apologies, I got a little rattled by my ears for a moment here. So, no surprise. Anyways, the other question I have for you is, is have you had an opportunity to, to discuss this with staff to see if there were other alternatives available to, to, to make this thing work?
No.
No, all right.
We're open to suggestions.
Okay, because I, I, I'm a little troubled by this one as well, too, and I'm not necessarily convinced that that's going to work well in the current configuration you're trying to bring up. I see more problems than anything. When I look at, I mean, like Linda said, we've all driven by this area before. I mean, at least once a week, I go by that area, you know? So, I've, I've kinda got the visual of, of where we are. I think you've got other opportunities that could emerge here, that could be a lot more user-friendly, not only to yourself, but for the town as well, too. I, I'd probably ask that, you probably should tap into staff at this point, just pick their brain a little bit, because they've usually got a few good ideas about what other alternatives can be expressed in that, in that particular vicinity. So, I, I just will throw that out to you, that maybe before we bring, if we do bring things to a close tonight, you may wanna respectfully ask this board to continue for at least one more meeting and see if, if maybe perchance there's another way to work this out. I mean, cause it doesn't fail me either that, as I look at this, there are also seven letters of opposition, a lot of people who are really right next door to you at this point, and, and they brought up some very good points. So, I'm just gonna throw that out for a little bit of food.
Okay.
Okay?
I say request.
Thank you. I know that, I'm gonna open the public. Diane?
Could I just ask?
Yes?
Mr. Green, to do something, perhaps it would be a good idea, since it is rather hard if you're in a car, some of us have a difficult time walking, is to say, coming down here where the trees are that you're concerned about, so that we know what's...
Ah, yes.
I don't know what's behind her house.
No, no, not behind the house, to the left of the existing double parking area.
Right, there.
Yes.
But it's hard to know as you drive by quick, and I would like to know how much room you've got between in that length of that.
Yeah, if you, if you extend that, the wall at the rear of that parking lot, if you look at that, next time you go by there, there's a wall about this high at the back, and the ground goes up from there.
Right.
And immediately to the left of that, there are, there's actually three trees with their roots extending.
Yeah.
All right?
I'm a tree person.
Yeah, me too, I like trees. And if we, if we cut back in there, those trees are going, they're gonna fall over.
What's the, do you know what the rise is between where your parking space is and the rise up to behind that wall?
It's probably three or four feet by the time you take the wall, and then you go uphill from there. If you go, by all means, come by the house, ask me, I'll give you my phone number. I can walk you there, and I can show you the tree roots, which are right on top of the ground there. If you cut into those, those trees are falling over.
I understand what you're doing. The, what happens, yeah?
Right, cause we considered, we considered stacking. In fact, we considered putting a garage. But, everybody liked the trees, so we thought, okay, well, let's try and do another parking space instead. We liked the trees.
Go ahead.
Yeah, then the trees are bye-bye. But we're not talking about.
We like the yard. Have you ever been in that yard?
Richard.
It's wonderful.
We're not talking about, I don't even know what the dimensions of the existing parking space are. You don't have them on here, so I can read them. I think you need to put those on there.
We can do that.
Second off, you're saying the trees, I know there's things all over the place in this yard, but there, you're saying that the trees you don't wanna cut into are the ones closer to town.
Yes.
Nobody's saying expand it left to right. We're saying double-load going into the lot and move the wall back.
That's what I'm saying. If you move that wall back, you'll cut into those tree roots. Go and have a look. I'm, I'll be happy to show you.
Is there anything? Go ahead. No, go ahead, I'll, I'll come to you in a second.
Just, this'll be the last, last comment from moi. You could take a car off for the proposed new parking place, and you could put two parking places in front of the existing drop-off space. So you could take, you could become, you could do three new parking places in addition to the drop-off spot. Move the drop-off spot six feet to the east, and you'd have three spaces available now. And you'd have three spaces available for the applicant on their property, without wrecking any trees. That's all I'm saying. It's right there on the map. Did you get a map like this? See it? It's right here. Right in front of the proposed curb cut and parking, the new parking spot. It's a drop-off space for the hospital thrift shop, 15-minute limit. Yeah?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah. So, we could create three parking places in front of the hospital thrift shop, which they like a lot of turnover, and they could continue to have their drop-off space for 15 minutes, and then the, the applicant can have three parking places, and that's it. It's deceptively simple, in my opinion. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Lull?
I think we should definitely continue. Go look at this thing a little bit more closely. I looked at it today, I thought I looked at it close enough, but I guess I didn't. But I will say to you, Richard, second driveway cuts are the most complicated. I've said this maybe seven or eight times in the past seven years I've been here. They are the most complicated thing we do. Every one of them is different. That one on, on New Mill Street, I mean, on North Mill Street was the biggest nightmare I've ever seen in my life. You were talking about two feet of digging was gonna knock a house down. And you're talking about knocking trees down, this was gonna knock a house down. And so, I don't know what's more important, some people might think the tree is. You know, there's another thing, too, you have to think about as a precedent. There's a lot of people downtown that would love to be able to do this kind of thing on Fair Street, on Pine Street, on our street, everywhere. So, we have to, we have to really, we have to look at these things completely, okay? You can't just grant second driveway cuts in places like that.
I understand. I understand.
Especially this street. So I think I agree with continuing, Mr. Chairman. I think that we should look at it again and just have a little bit better answers for the applicant. You have to give them that. Even if we don't technically agree with it, we should really have a better opinion of what's happening down there. I want to look at what Kyle is talking about. I want to look at the yellow line. Maybe it shouldn't even be there. I mean, there's a lot of yellow lines on that street that are kind of a nightmare. But we don't want to make another space where people are backing out. That's the other thing.
No.
I see that as a back-out, not a back-in.
Well, I particularly tried that, and I have a pretty big car. It's a pickup truck.
No, I'm talking about the new one.
I'm talking about the new one.
Okay.
Yeah. Because what you do is you pull in across the road there. May I approach with a picture?
Sure.
Yeah.
As I say, we like to back in, so... This is the spot we question right here.
This is where you want to cut.
This is where I want to cut, right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I can go into this, onto the pavement here, and I can back into here to my pickup truck.
Yeah. That's if nobody's here.
That's if nobody's parked on the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
I'm not going into that driveway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
There are a couple of them on the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if I can get my pickup truck in there, and then we can back in here, and we can come out like that.
And this is the thrift shop spot, right there.
This is your thrift shop drop-off.
Yeah, I see.
And there's another parking space right to your right.
Pass it down, please.
And what Kyle's talking about is getting rid of this yellow...
Yeah, see that yellow line there?
Which, but that driveway...
There's where we want to be, look, right here. This is the thrift shop parking spot. This is the driveway out here. You pull in here and back in there. You see that?
Right, this is...
Get the idea?
Aye, 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 aye.
This is the yellow line.
This is the yellow line existing. This is the thrift shop parking spot right here.
Where are these guys? Did he just wrap all these? Oh, okay.
What you do is you pull, you nose in here, sit back over the road.
Right.
And you turn out, you pull up there, you go back a little, and then... If you turn out forward, see this guy? He does the same thing.
Am I proposing to push this forward six or eight feet?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should go look at it again.
I think we should call him. You got...
I got your phone number off this paper.
See, the problem, Richard, you can't park what Kyle's talking about, and I'm not going to agree or disagree with Kyle's point. I think his point is good, except you have to park on the sidewalk on India Street. So if you park, that instantly was gone, this yellow. So would the pole, and so would the horse things, because you'd have to park on the sidewalk so you don't get your mirrors knocked out.
The orange line is there, so these people can drive out.
Well, you're driving on the sidewalk on this side, which is what people do.
You got to have, according to the guidelines, if this is the thrift shop...
They've got to be able to back out.
This is the thrift shop, from two feet from here.
You have to be able to back out, yeah.
That's why they have a yellow line here for this.
You got to be able to come out forward here. You don't need a yellow line here, you need it here.
Yeah, yeah.
From two feet from here, forward. And as a practical matter, you can come out forward from there. It'd be very nice if the thrift shop could be imposed back in here and come out forward. You could have parking along in here.
In the summertime, it's kind of probably hard to do.
Well, when Kyle was in charge there, she'd stand out there, and...
You're not making any friends, Richard.
He still does.
And she'd let everybody in, you know?
They still have to do that to get...
Yeah, either way, that's kind of anything that we have.
Leslie, Andrew, did you have anything for us on this? Not at this juncture?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this for the record, please. Good evening. Rhoda, how are you tonight? Good, I'm glad.
For the record, Rhoda Wyman, I represent the estate of Kurt Livingston. He is the closest abutter on the west side, and we are strongly opposed to this. If you talk about trees that are going to be ruined, I mean, he's going to, I'd like to approach, if I may, and just give you some photos.
Yes, ma'am. Please.
First of all, I park across the street. I'm very familiar with this property. I see three cars in that driveway over the years, three smaller cars, and certainly they can expand this so that they can stack too, if that's what they want to do. But here's, that's where this exists now. This is my client's property here, and you can see how close it is. His garden and trees are all on the property line. If they came in here, he would lose one of these trees, but the garden as well. And he wouldn't be able to get out of this driveway, and it's so close to where it's right on your line, and it's just inappropriate to allow this in this area. It's a very difficult strip, you don't know. And this lot is so large that they certainly could extend this driveway if you were before, so... And so I would ask you, please, please deny this application for this area, and if they want to, you know, get some recommendations from staff, I think that's great, but they have enough room in this lot to do several other things without impacting the entire neighborhood and people in my client here. So I ask you, please, to mind this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
I'm sorry. Hold on just for a second.
I wasn't clear, which side is your client?
The right. The west side.
The west side?
The driveway, yes.
But your picture is of the east side?
No.
No, the...
You have another picture of the west side?
He showed both sides. Yeah, he got both.
Yeah. And what was going to happen to the west side? I wasn't clear about what trees were going to be destroyed.
He just didn't lose everything inside. You're all into this and to the record.
Yeah, that'll wind up going to staff, actually, but if you want to take a second?
Present?
Yeah, please, I would want you to.
What trees are we...
Rhoda, could you come forward? Thank you. I appreciate it.
He's got a whole garden, you know, he's got a whole garden in here, and...
His box moved through the whole...
Yeah, I mean, beautiful garden, and he would be sold out. But the line is it's not safe, and there are, the other alternative is to scale this driveway, which is already wired.
I don't understand why these trees would be here.
Same reason that...
All right, I'm giving a tremendous amount of latitude, because everything should be going through the chair, so I'm just trying to get the two of you on the same page. Thank you for your indulgence.
No, thank you. Thank you for letting us be heard. I'm Kathy Ward. I'm president of the board for the hospital thrift shop, and I'd like to address a couple of the questions that have arisen, specifically the one that Carl just brought up about moving that donation spot forward six or eight feet. That would make it impossible for us to get 100 volunteers a week in and out of that driveway, and we do go out and we stop the traffic, and it's difficult because you're coming down a very narrow driveway. We go all the way to the back of the lot. We've expanded in the back of the lot so that we can get the volunteers' cars in there. And when you start pulling them out between two buildings that are very close, and I don't have the dimensions of that driveway, when you start pulling out there, you're going to clip the front of your car on the house next door, and it's tough enough with the yellow line. So if you move our donation spot up, then you've just killed us being able to get people in and out of there, and losing the donation spot would just...
I'm not proposing to lose the donation spot.
No, I understand what you're saying. You're saying move it...
No, I'm not following this at all.
You're saying move it towards hand.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't follow what you're getting at here, ma'am.
All right, but you should, all right, I'm going to say this again. This flows through the chair at this point. I will occasionally allow back and forth, but at appropriate moments, this is not directed at you, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. No, I was just addressing a question that he suggested.
Okay, but I...
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. But the thrift shop, the board of the thrift shop has met on this issue, and we feel very strongly opposed to the second curb cut. There's no other second curb cut on India Street. Everybody goes tandem in those driveways. It would really damage our ability to have donations dropped off for us, and also would make it very difficult for people driving, backing out of that driveway, because we are directly across the street. That yellow line that was being suggested to move forward would actually impede our ability to get in and out. So that's it. I thank you for...
Could I address that, Mr. Chair?
Did you have a question for her? Okay. Yes, sir.
I do have a picture.
Thank you. We'll take that. I'll have you drop it off at the... Thank you. Mr. Green?
From what I understand, Mr. Chair, the objection of the thrift shop point of view is that moving the drop-off parking spot would impede their access to their driveway. But first of all, I'm not proposing that we move the drop-off parking spot. I'm proposing that we simply add a driving, a driveway. I'm not proposing that we move, I can get in and out of there without moving that drop-off spot. And the other thing is that even if the drop-off spot were to be moved, or per Mr. Boersch's suggestion, additional spot put there for additional parking, there is no reason why any number of cars can't back into the driveway. Presently, they go in forwards and they back out. But if they change their habit and backed in and drove out, all of that problem goes away. But I think that that is actually not part of my application. My application does not envision impacting the thrift shop parking at all.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this? Ma'am?
I would just be interested in what the next steps are.
I don't see anyone else who's going to come up tonight. I had mentioned to the applicant that I thought this may be a good idea to continue. It's at the applicant's understanding as well, too, that they can proceed however they want. He could ask that things be closed tonight. I respectfully asked him, because he hasn't really had an opportunity to talk with staff, and I know they deal a lot with downtown parking that's there, sometimes they see things through very different eyes, and they might be able to work with the applicant. So I had said to Mr. Green that I thought maybe a prudent idea would be to meet with staff over the course of the next month, see if there's any other alternatives that could be expressed, and continue this meeting until our next meeting on February 9. That will be his final decision, whether he chooses to do that or not. It's entirely in his valley work tonight. What I'd like to do at the moment is just see if anyone else in the audience has any more comment for us, because that's a really important phase of what we do right now. And then, before we take any further action, I'm going to turn back to him and see what his desires are tonight. Myself, Mr. Lowell, I think have both expressed that we think it's a good idea. It will be his final decision. Does that help clarify the issue, ma'am?
Yeah, thank you.
Good. All right. So is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on this? No. Mr. Green, you've heard my thought. You've heard Mr. Lowell's thought.
I would like to request that you continue.
Okay, thank you. I think there's some prudence there.
Set up a meeting? I don't know. Can we all meet?
I would, well...
No, not right now, but...
All right. Here's...
How do we do that?
I think both Mr. Lowell and I are on the same page, and staff has been always phenomenal to at least see if they can offer additional guidance with some of these things. Tomorrow, or over the course of the next week, I'd suggest you call, make an appointment with either Andrew or Leslie regarding this, and see if they have any additional insights for you.
Okay.
On this. That's usually very, very helpful with those kind of things.
Great.
All right.
To continue to February 9.
And do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I say unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you. Next application is 04-15 for the Brotherhood of Thieves. This is an amendment to their application for the applicant.
Technical point, Mr. Chairman. We have to renotice this, Leslie, is that correct, because the scope changed?
Yes.
Then we shouldn't hear it tonight? I'm uncomfortable hearing it tonight if we have to renotice, because it went from 400-something to 600-and-something?
Mr. Chairman, the size of the patio changed, but I believe there may be people here in the audience who came just for this hearing, and it does need to be read advertised, but I don't see why you couldn't take testimony tonight and that we can read advertise it.
And just keep going.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Sound okay? Yeah, I think we're good here. I think we heard what Leslie said. Mr. Brescher, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. For the record, John Brescher, attorney for 23 Broad Street LLC, doing business as the Brotherhood of Thieves. As Linda and staff correctly pointed out, we will ultimately be requesting continuance for this application, because it will need to be renoticed for the size of the patio and for a recalculation of the open space. Nonetheless, a quick overview of the scope of the project is that the applicants are requesting a modification to the MCD Special Permit 1304, which was then modified in 2005 for landscaping and 2007 to address the patio, which was allowed to have an awning and to be open until 11:00 p.m. The applicants are before the board to request the following four items. One is to eliminate condition number four of the original planning board decision, which capped the seating of the patio at 60 seats. Pursuant to the change of the parking bylaw in 139-18, there are no longer any parking requirements for an expansion of a business in the commercial downtown zoning district. The applicant is proposing to expand the patio, and they want to increase it so that the total seating capacity is 80 persons. Further to that point, they want, they'd like to have that restriction lifted and have it be governed by the, basically, the Building and Occupancy Code, rather than have it tied to any parking restrictions. The second involves the patio area, and it's reducing the open space, the amount of open space, because the patio will be increasing. Says the patio is going to be increasing from 490 square feet to 600 square feet. We just found out about this today. I have a landscaping plan that I can show you that I'll be submitting to staff as well. But because this needs to be renoticed, I'm not sure how and to what capacity the board wants to address it at this time. The other is eliminating conditions number seven and eight of Planning Board Decision 1304. And this is to request that the Board of Selectmen be the sole entertainment licensing body, rather than duplicating efforts between going to the planning board and then going to the selectmen for the entertainment. We've received the letters of opposition from the abutters to this, and my clients are prepared to basically make the concession of only staying, having entertainment on the patio until 10:00 p.m., and only having pre-recorded music, music out of like an iPad or an iPod or what have you. So it's no live entertainment, and originally, the notice said that it would be to have it up until 11:00 p.m., and that has since changed to 10:00 p.m. And even, I can assure you that should the board decide to just waive that, eliminate that condition from the decision, that's what they will be applying to the selectmen for. They've looked through the various licenses, entertainment licenses around the downtown, and those establishments with patios, the standard pretty much is they're open until 10:00 p.m., and it's only pre-recorded music. So it would be in line with what the selectmen are thinking.
I'm confused. Before you keep going...
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yeah, please.
Are you saying live entertainment up till 10:00, and then pre-recorded after?
No.
Or no live out there at all?
No, 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 I'm sorry. No live entertainment at all.
Okay, so that's not changing?
That is not, that is correct. That is not changing.
Okay.
Correct, just pre-recorded music. And the final part of the application is to approve the site plan for minor site plan review, but as it says, the patio is going to be changing, this is, the site plan that's been attached in the packet will be changing as well. That's the gist of the application. As we said, we know that we need to continue this for the renoticing for the patio. We've been cognizant of the neighbors and tried to address the majority of their concerns by sort of tailoring the entertainment aspect of this application. You know, Broad Street is changing dramatically with the amount of construction, and my clients are just looking to keep up with the expansion. And to further the point on the patio, the establishment is not, it's a family restaurant. It's not looking to be a nightclub, late-night place. It's designed for families and hopes to continue that way.
Okay, great. Board members, so you may want to just be a little limited in your conversation here, realizing that we do also have to garner some more information from the applicant.
That's correct.
With the proposed increase and also the recalculations necessary to make that happen. It feels like there's a few things that will be contingent on that. But, next meeting. So, Andrew, did you have something before I turned to the board?
Along those lines, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, through you, to ask the applicant, John, are you asking that conditions 15, 16, 17 be eliminated? 15 is related to the NRTA, annual passes. 16 is that the two parking spaces be marked. I assume they're going away, so you would remove that?
I'm not, I can tell you the NRTA passes are still, certainly still on the table. As for the marked parking spaces...
For employee parking only, those spaces will be gone, won't they?
I need to check the plan. They very well may be.
Okay. And then it also says no long-term parking be permitted within the loading zone during operating hours? And again, I'm not sure if that condition applies anymore. I just, if we are read advertising, I want to be, to be clear...
Correct.
If there's some additional...
Sure.
I don't want to come in February and find some other things missing.
Unintended consequences, as it were.
And there is also a requirement, number 20 in the decision, about the creation of an apron. And again, if the apron is still needed or necessary, then fine.
Sure.
But if not, I'd like, you know, us to get the decision in sync.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, board members, do you have anything you'd like to kind of begin to focus on a little bit tonight? Carl, please.
I'm pretty comfortable with the whole revision, sir. The only major problem I had was taking entertainment till 11:00 p.m., and we went through a big mess with the lobster trap a while back. And I think 10:00 o'clock is much more appropriate for that area. I have read all the letters, and I think it's a good move, and I would support that.
Great. Mr. McGlaughlin, did you have something?
Yes, I have a question. It's written that the note outside, speakers, loudspeakers of any kind, it says outside. Now, if you've got a roof there, that is just over a patio, and that's all it's doing, is actually, if you put one underneath there, is considered outside or inside?
I would think that would still be considered outside structure, I mean, even if there is an awning over it, I think it's still...
I think you better be very careful with it, because we had trouble with another restaurant that wanted all outdoors, caused a lot of problems, you know, by the town.
Sure.
And the other one is, the last thing was, no music may be played or performed outside at any time. That's number eight. Number four, full capacity is 60 persons to eight. If you have eight of them, eight of those 60 will be basies. The last thing, this is in 2004. I don't think that has changed much since then. If it has, I'd like to ask the board if they have any comment, but any changes since 2004, actually, that would affect any of these aspects for now.
I mean, the parking was the major change, John, because that released a portion of the property from having to have a driveway and, you know, parking maneuvering spots.
I also see a downtown situation here, as well as anywhere else. Not just parking, but also of the other requirements, you know, music, whatever, you know? And now the, was it down there, used to be Kenny Pease's building, across from your old fire station, what's that restaurant there?
Rosencray?
Thank you, yeah, a little shy. Now, we had many problems with that when it first come up with air conditioning, you've got to shut the windows for air conditioning, keep it shut, you know? And I think the finish in here, you should build it enough that it will not have the neighbors squawking. Now, I'd like to see that I can change my mind on some of it from mitigating circumstances, but they haven't been met yet, far as I'm concerned. And one of them is go talk to these nine people, get them to sign a petition, they don't object, because they're the ones that live there, I don't, I'm way out of town. But I hate to see them suffer if something goes haywire. Thank you.
Hey, John, can I ask you one question?
Of course.
Oh.
That's okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
The gravel driveway that's existing, that's left in the, I know this isn't the final plan...
Yes.
But it is getting narrower as a result of the bookworks, right?
I believe that it is.
Okay. So, because the deliveries can get made from the street, especially with the tree gone. Sorry that the tree's gone, but it is better, actually, because the loading zone is on the other side of the street. Normally, the pup trailers can back right in there and make their deliveries inside the, because there's room to get in, especially when the street became one-way.
Mm-hmm.
It was easier.
Right.
But with the tree gone, and if that doesn't work for them anymore, and just trash trucks can get in there, but the little semis can't get in, they'll be able to deliver from the front in the morning. So I'm not concerned about that, if that's something that you're, you know, because there's a change that's being made that can't be helped.
Right.
You know what I mean? And the parking thing, it's good that that's not part of it anymore, so. Those air conditioning units are there now, those are existing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's my thought. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? So, just two things I want to ask you, if you would. The first is, how are we doing with our NRTA passes? Are those being adhered to on a yearly basis? Because I know in the past, there was a problem, and this is just a good opportunity to cross-check in.
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I will certainly find out before the next meeting.
I'm sure you will. I have no question about that. The other question I have for you is just to see if you could provide staff a listing or a record of any filed noise complaints through the police department over the course of the past year.
I don't believe there are any, but I'll double-check with the, please, just to ensure...
Thank you, just to provide the appropriate documentation, because I know that has kind of surfaced up as an issue in the letters of opposition. So that would be helpful to have just a record of that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Anything else? Staff members, anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if you'd like to comment on this, just raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. And for the record, just please identify yourself, if you're in a butter, just give us your address, and that's always helpful. Thank you. Hi.
Hi. My name is Bill Boardman. I live at 8 Ash Street. My wife and I live at 8 Ash Street. We've been there 25 years. We're full-time residents. We have had experience as a neighbor of the Brotherhood now for 25 years. As I said in our letter in opposition to this application, for most of that 25 years, until the fire and the rebuilding, it was a reasonably harmonious coexistence. You know, we recognize we've got a restaurant there, they have to have fans, they do have fans, they have more fans now than they had before, because they have greater capacity. And all of us neighbors that run up and down Ash Lane and Ash Street, I think all of us responded, and I think we responded unanimously. Not everybody could be here tonight, but some of the others are, and I'll let them speak for themselves. But the noise level that comes out of that patio, absent music, is distracting for the neighborhood, for residential neighborhood. Now, you all, in the zoning application that came up, you granted them the ability to expand and have outside capacity, and we have not complained. There have not been noise complaints, to answer Mr. Recker's question. That is not because we haven't thought about filing those, we just have tried to avoid causing problems, you know, given the nature of the compromise that you all put in place initially. To expand this further and to allow entertainment even till 10:00 o'clock at night, and we're talking about amplified entertainment, would be just, it would be impossible to live with as neighbors. We had the experience in, over, not after the weekend, but a Christmas stroll, where they had entertainment out there in the afternoon. The noise level of that entertainment in the afternoon, whether authorized or unauthorized, was so loud that in the front of my house on Ash Street, you couldn't sit and read a book. I mean, discretion just doesn't exist when you have lots of people out there drinking, being entertained. And, you know, I think that's what they found at the lobster trap. It's right of butts, a residential neighborhood, it's what the Board of Selectmen found there, and we have it here already without having outside entertainment. So I think on behalf of all of us abutters, we strongly oppose the changing of the permit to allow that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? Hi.
Hi there. Chuck Davis, my wife Ann Lingeman Davis, 10 Ash Street, speaking on behalf of the broader family, which includes probably about six, eight people at this point, but only two of us made it out here this evening. I would say, we do our reading in the backyard, which unfortunately is on the Ash Lane side of the street. That's the main living area that we are in. By the way, we're just up the hill from the Boardman's. It's background noise. It's a compromised situation that we're all seeking to deal with, and we've sought to deal with it successfully over the years. But the basic question is, just because business is expanding on Broad Street, why make a compromised situation worse? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Anyone else like to comment on this? How are you tonight?
Great.
Good.
Hi, I'm Mary Parker. I'm at, my house is 2 Ash Lane, so it is immediate abutter with Brotherhood. We share the same fence. And my house is a weekly vacation rental house in the summertime, and the bedrooms back up to the Brotherhood. And I'm really concerned that the noise level that already exists there, if it was brought up in any way with music, could sabotage my business, could really wipe out my rental business, disturb those guests, and I'm vehemently opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to... Ms. Alge?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, my client, Bruce Persley, at 21 Broad Street, had written a letter of concern to the board, and his two points that he was concerned about have been addressed, and that is the no live music and no music beyond 10:00 o'clock. He feels the Brotherhood has been a good neighbor to him, and that these enhancements will be of a benefit to Broad Street. And with those two conditions, he's happy to see the permit go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Hearing no one else at this point, board members, I would suggest that we... Thank you. Motion's made to continue to February 9th. Motion's made to continue to February 9th. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I just need a moment. Next thing is 0115 and 7785. This is William Intrino Sumitaro at 28 Equator Drive for the applicant.
William Sumitaro.
Continue. Hi.
Hi.
Do you have anything you want to offer to us before we start?
Just the access off of Somerset Road is to create a covenant home. That's all I have to add to that.
Okay. Anything from staff, first of all? Because I know you just kind of raised some concerns real quickly. Did you need additional information from the applicant? I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Chairman. I mean, there's a couple of things going on in this application. Number one is a special permit for the Covenant House...
Yep.
...which is a standard application, and one that we've seen many of those before. What is a little bit different is that because there is a special permit condition that limited access to, out to Somerset, that's an additional request here. So if you act positively on this, there will be a final A&R at some point in the future. We can certainly operate on a sketch plan. There's been a conceptual plan submitted of what is proposed.
Yep.
If you've seen the site, you see that there's an existing access that goes to Somerset now. So it's not a radical change from what exists on the ground at the moment.
Go ahead.
There was a prohibition from further subdivision in here that's expired?
The prohibition is about zoning, zoning change. So it's creating additional building lots. Here, there's no additional capacity here. It's a covenant lot, there's two structures on the original lot.
So it's going to be condo, not fee simple?
No, it would be a fee simple covenant lot.
Okay.
So we have to modify the conditions to allow that.
The existing driveway through the, chairman again, off of Somerset, is not a legal driveway, correct? It's just there?
It's not legal.
Okay.
But it has functioned for some time, is that correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
For 20 years?
Uh-uh.
When I built the back dwelling in 96 or 95, when I built the back dwelling, I'm not, yeah, I mean, while we were building it, we used it, it's not anything cut, and it's just from, you know, driving getting out of it.
And it...
We've just been using it since.
Mr. Chairman, through, it's a dirt driveway, correct?
Yes, yes.
So it's a dirt driveway, because it does appear for some time in our aerial photographs, so it looks like it's been in continuous use through that time.
My problem is, I can't take into consideration a driveway that's not allowed in the subdivision or by the planning board, no matter how long it's been there. I am unwilling to validate a driveway off of Somerset Road, given the restrictions in the subdivision itself. This is going to open a hornet's nest of major proportions. They have two driveways off of Equator Drive now, at least on the plan.
They do.
And I don't have a problem with extending one of them all the way back to the Covenant House by easement. But I'm having, I don't know which one would go with which side, but I'm having an issue creating a third driveway where it's very explicit that no access, driveway access, be allowed onto Somerset Road. And it's not improved, and I see this starting a pattern out there, and I've got a major concern with it. I have no problem with a covenant lot, I have no problem with easements for access or any of the other stuff off of Equator. But I have a major problem with validating a driveway off of Somerset Road, under the situation that we have now.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, could I, just for clarification...
Please.
Yeah.
These requests aren't unusual. You just had one not too long ago. I mean, these subdivisions from the 1980s had different conditions. And I, you know, again, I disagree, Linda, with your opinion that if we grant one, we have to grant all. That is certainly not the case at all. You can take each and every one of these on their individual merit. It doesn't, it doesn't, this request is not to eliminate them for all of the properties, it's for this one particular lot in the subdivision. And there are certainly reasons where the lots front on Bartlett Road, where you would not lift those at all, because they were specifically, if you read the minutes, they were designed not to have multiple curb cuts on a busy road. The case at Somerset was that in the 1980s, that road was in very poor condition, and all of the maintenance money was inwardly directed towards the interior subdivision road. So there's, I hear sometimes this, the broad brush being painted, and this is one applicant, one assignment. If a member feels pressure to grant other permits, that would be their opinion on it. But you, the board is under no, if they were to grant this, you're not under any obligation to grant all of them. I think that needs to be clear.
Well, that brings me back, Mr. Chairman, to having to improve this. I know Marsh Hawk is out there, but Marsh Hawk, I don't think runs all the way. Does Marsh Hawk run all the way through? There's a gate there.
All right.
Yeah. I'm having a lot of trouble with this. I don't care about the two that they've got on Equator Drive, probably we didn't approve both of those either, because it's a dual curb cut on the lot. But I don't have a problem with approving that at all. But I'm having trouble running off of Somerset Road. And this is in the middle of that whole group. This isn't towards Bartlett or towards Meadowview at the other end? Something up there.
Yeah, but it's...
It's right dead center. So I'm having, I'm just very concerned about starting that. I understand we control everybody out there. But other people have already asked me about cutting into that as well. Plus, I've had to go out there, because the HCC has approved some stuff on the backsides of these lots, that... that the whole point was it wasn't visible from a travel way. And that's certainly not going to be the case. Because how are you going to get to it unless you improve that part of Somerset Road? You're coming down the backside of those properties, a dirt road, not improved, to get to that particular parking space when you're, I know you already go down there to get to it when your mother-in-law was living there or somebody was up there.
Right.
But I'm concerned about this.
Very.
The, okay, yeah.
Billy wanted to answer.
Let me go to Diane first who had her hand raised, but I do have a question for Andrew here, just on one or two things. But go ahead, Diane. Please.
This is the only house on Equator all the way up and around in actually Enterprise and Topaz that has double cut in the curb as it is. And the one on the west side is perfectly large enough to go back to that second house. I think having access on Somerset Road is, Somerset Road is not improved. The land goes up and down, so it's hard to get around and turn onto Somerset Road from one of the, from a driveway. My daughter lives on Friendship just down there. And her land backs up to Somerset Road. And they were under the opinion that there was no access to that. And I think opening up Somerset Road, whether you open up one or 15, is going to port to more traffic on the road than it is now and hasn't been for the last 25 years. Bill, it should take traffic.
All right, thank you. Mr. Woll?
Yes. Bill, what would you, if this was a, let's just say this was a standard secondary lot application. You know, we've had about six so far in the last... Would that be about right, Andrew? About six or seven in the last few years? Like that?
More than that, but...
Is it? Okay. Well, anyway. If we, if you had one driveway cut, I mean, we would have to approve the secondary cut. I mean, you can't have three cuts. I mean, you saw what we just went through with this thing.
No, no, I understand.
It's, the secondary driveway cut thing is a big deal. It's a special permit. It has, every one of them is different. I just counted 22 lots that are but, you know, that are on that side of Somerset. Seventeen are but out of the 22. All the way to, through Enterprise, sir. You know, I agree with Andrew's point. I mean, we're dealing with this thing on Gulfview right now. It's a similar issue. The, this left, this left, there's not as many houses. The road is bad, you know, Gulfview Drive. The smooth hummockes, I guess, you know, obviously is in better shape than Somerset. But we have other roads on the Antocat that are like this, where you have a road that isn't used to go through. It's used, like Cato Lane is like that. It's, Cato Lane really doesn't go through. It does on paper, but it doesn't in reality. Miller's Way is another one. Shacamo is another one. The Shacamo goes all the way through, but you can't drive it.
Somerset goes all the way through.
It does, but you can't, it's not very easy to drive. So what I'm saying is, it's not unusual to see this kind of a situation, is what I'm saying. I don't, we have, in over the past few years, we, when you, let's just say that this was, this is essentially a secondary dwelling application, even though you already have it, that this is your covenant lot, is this garage, right?
Yes.
A lot of times we get, in the past, we've asked, you know, asked the applicant to approve the road in like low beach roads that don't have any traffic for one house. I mean, most of the people that live here, I mean, this is going to take another 30 years of time for people to make decisions on their own over time, whether they want access this way or not, for whatever reason. It's obviously the configuration of the lot creates an issue with needing to have that driveway because you can't, you'd be driving through your whole lot to get there. My question is, and this is a staff question into the applicant. Would you be, if we granted this application for the driveway, would you, we would have to get rid of a driveway, Andrew. Correct? I mean, we'd have to make a decision of which one of those driveways you would eliminate, correct? I mean, we would have three driveway cuts for one lot. And that, you know, once something like this goes out and, you know, it's, now it's a, you know, a lot of scrutiny on it, we're going to have to do something with the driveway.
Well, you could, you could make a condition that one of them be removed. You could make that a condition of your approval.
Right.
If you chose to...
Because they would have to destroy their whole yard to get there from this driveway, because this is the only one that you can use. Can't use this one because there's a pool in the way. Right? I mean, you got to use the left one if you were going to.
But that would take...
Take up...
The rest of, yeah, it would, just basically from the pool area of the house and the, the fact that the pool that you see, it would be, that would be the end of the property.
Yeah. So that's my, I mean, I don't, I don't consider this a precedent as much as other thing. I consider that industry thing more of a precedent than this. Because you have all, all these lots, the same thing is going to happen over time. This natural growth, natural changes that people make, it's families, estate planning, secondary dwellings, it doesn't matter. How many, how many lots in this road have secondary dwellings now? You know, what I'm saying is, there's going to be other people that are going to want to try to get access in a different way because of the way they're shaped.
Mm-hmm.
You know? They're not, they're not square, you know? So, I mean, I just have, the only thing that I say, Andrew, is the other driveway.
Do you have a question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Andrew.
I just, you know, do think that the board should understand that there is a precedent further on Somerset Road now at the intersection of Marble Way. The covenant lots do have separate access. They have access, and I, I think that at least the section that leads to this property is in pretty good shape.
It is.
At the beginning, yes.
I think it deteriorates afterwards, and that always should factor into your decision making.
After Marsh Hawk is where it gets worse.
That's where it gets tight.
I also think that this wouldn't be a matter that you necessarily would open up for a second dwelling. But in this case, this is a covenant home. And I think that we've encouraged them, again, pretty close to the west here. And all of them have distinct separate entrances, which is important for how these lots lay out and for the privacy of the occupants, so.
I agree.
Are you done that, or do you have?
Yeah, no, I'm good for now, for a minute.
Carl?
Question, Mr., through you, Mr. Chairman, to staff?
Yeah.
And this is a, this is a basic question from somebody who hasn't been doing this for too long. There are two curb cuts on Equator Drive, which is a road. And there's a different road, Somerset Road. Is it possible to have a curb cut or two curb cuts on a different road on the same lot? Because it's a different road.
Right, it does require a special permit, but yes.
Phil, say? Yeah. Well, hold on, John. Linda will have the floor. I'll come to you. Go ahead.
The only way, both of the driveways right now are wider than they need to be for a single load. A single load is what, 12? Width, 12. One's 20, one's 18. One's going to have to go. The only way I would even entertain doing this, if one of them went away, obviously. But the only way I'd entertain it coming off of Somerset Road in the decision for me to be comfortable at all, it would have to have a whole lot of language in there that we are doing this, Andrew and Leslie, solely because this is a covenant house and we're gaining an affordable unit. And because of the configuration of the lot, this is the only way to gain separate access for the covenant unit. And it, all the reasons why it doesn't work off of Equator because of the existing house, the existing improvements on the lot. And this is specifically in the decision not to set a precedent for other access on Somerset from this subdivision. I'm going to be really clear in the decision about that. Since that's what we're saying, that's what, that's the argument that we're trying to make. I'd be okay with that, with all those caveats.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I had a comment. The, I have before me a plan from Equator Drive, April 10th, 1997. That's when it was received. It could have been, I don't know what date it was filed. There's a letter on May 29th, 1998, 17 years ago, to Jack Dunn. And in it, it states, it was from Connie Donnelly, administrative specialist. And it states that it comes to a planning board detention, et cetera, there's a violation, he said. Now, since 1998, when Jack Dunn received this, has anybody had any knowledge and staff from, was any action taken on this letter since 1998? Has it been brought forward? And so why, why is it showing up now? Did you have a problem?
He never enforced anything.
Yeah, Andrew, please.
To my knowledge, the building department did not enforce it.
I'm sorry?
The building department is responsible to enforce this, the zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector. And I don't believe that it's been enforced.
Apparently, Jack Dunn held it up.
Okay. So, Andrew, Leslie, I have just a quick question for you. Refresh my memory. Somerset Lane is public or private? Public?
Somerset is private.
All right, so, kind of just tracking with Mr. Woll for a minute. The condition, and Somerset up to that area is... It's decent, but I'm trying, I'm just trying to remember. Is it paved or is it?
No.
No.
All right. Excuse me. As a board and staff looking at this area for potential development in the future, and I'm granted to want to do this because it is a covenant home, but it also raises the issue, do we need to start looking at this road kind of in the same vein that we did when we were out trying to deal with Gulfview Drive and that, and the road that was running through there? Is it, is it a function of... You probably have a better feel for the development potential here. And I'm wondering if it is prudent for us as a board, as we begin to look at opening this up, whether there's a mechanism to make sure that Somerset Road is well maintained into the future either like we did with, like we did with the whole Gulfview area. Be it paving, be it, you know, figuring out the number of lots that are out there. And you see where I'm tracking with this? I'm fine with getting a second curb cut in here. This is fine. I think you've heard the board say that of, if you're going to put that third curb, if you're going to do that, one of the two front ones needs to be eliminated. I agree with that. I'm not opposed to doing the Somerset Road thing, but I'm really wanting to get some information from staff. Because if other individuals in the area decide to do this, I want to make sure that Somerset Road is well maintained in the future as a private road, and we've just had something like this come up in the past. So I'm trying to, wanting to explore the scope with staff a little bit to see if that's something we should be turning our eyes toward. And I'm sorry if I'm putting you on the spot a little bit.
Well, the scenario would be that we would ask, we would get some sort of an estimate of what it would take to maintain or bring it to a certain standard, and we would ask anyone who applied within a certain area to contribute to it. You know, the problem is that there's quite, you know, I don't see a lot of additional development. You know, the worst section is between Meadow View and roughly Marsh Hawk.
Okay.
It's the narrowest, it's sort of the least used. The Marsh Hawk group is going to go that way. Well, if they have small cars.
Nobody goes all the way through.
They're going to go the other, over the, correct?
Yeah.
Takes half the time.
So, you know, the mechanism would be to set up some sort of an account that people would gradually deposit into, and we would have to come up with a figure.
Right.
I don't know what that would be at this moment.
And so let me ask you a question. Does that, that account as well too have a life to it? So that within a certain period of time, if nothing happens, then... You see, you see where all the wheels are turning at this point? Because if it does have a life to it and we're not seeing much more development, it now posits the question of even if we should track in that direction.
Well, I think the other situation was a much more active, the, the smooth hummocks.
I agree.
Was, is a much more active location than here.
I agree with you. And that's why I'm kind of just asking you to look at this through, through planning perspective eyes here about potentials for this area and whether it's worth looking into that direction or... I mean, I could justify the offset by just saying that it's going to be a covenant house, but I want to make sure that we're not losing that ability to try to deal with Somerset because it is kind of, got some really bad sections that need to be looked at if it's going to continue. If we as a board are going to continue. So I'm just going, let me just let that sit with you for a few minutes, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
This brings me back to the same question I asked on smooth hummocks. If this is a private road, do these lots in this subdivision that back up to it have rights to pass and repass to access their properties? If they don't have deeded rights, they can't even use it to drive on legally and park there. Have we scoped that part out on their deeds in there?
Well, I, the situation here is this was laid out as a county road, so there's an easement created by that layout.
Okay.
And this land abutted it.
It's a very bad layout.
The fact is, they put a restriction to prevent access to it.
We did.
Well, and it was agreed to.
Okay, but if we remove that restriction on this lot?
Yep.
Then there isn't any prohibition from them using it as frontage and access.
Correct.
By deed. Because as you know, many times these private roads, if you back up to it, you don't necessarily have rights to use it.
I understand.
But this one's okay.
I believe it is.
We might want to scope that out, unless we're making a decision tonight.
Well, it's up to the board on their, on which, if that's, if that's a request that the applicant needs to do, then...
Because any, all of us can pull the deed up on the...
Can be done.
I think, Barry.
Yes, sir.
I just want to follow up on what you said about, I'm trying to think where we, we made huge success on Squam.
Yep.
But, you know, we know why that happened.
Right.
No, 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 I understand that. I didn't want to say it. You just said it.
But you're right.
But what I'm getting at, you, boy.
Were you talking about the floor?
What I'm getting at is, we, it happened with Shimo last year or the year before, right? Something about, so there's no association to take care of the road. I think in a case like this, in this particular area where there's nothing going on, there's no real need to do any maintenance, really, is in the condition, you could, we could, staff could draft some kind of language where in light of future development, we could reopen the public hearing on this issue for this neighborhood or whatever. If this gets, you know, 10 years from now, there's six of these, let's just say. You know, then there might have to be some kind of maintenance that's paid by the people that have access. Or not paid, you know what I mean, maintain however they do it. If they do it themselves, it doesn't matter. I think it just gets, how does it get graded, Billy?
Once in a while, once in a...
Private road, did people just do it?
Once in a while, you see the grade and go...
Once in a while, you see the grader go by, and that's it.
Somebody does it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, further up, if you come in off, you know, that circle around French, you'll come, and you head up Somerset to the bad spot, I mean, there are, there's a lot of traffic from houses that are up that way.
Right.
You know, so it's not like I'm increasing the traffic.
No, you're not. No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
It's... I just see a grader run up and down every now and then. Not all the time, it's not a regular maintenance thing.
Yeah. We're just trying to dot the, you know, dot the i's across the t's, because this will be, there will be another one of these at some point, Billy, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
This is, this is, this is a little bit different. You know, we can't just say, "Okay, see you later," and just leave it, you know what I mean? But you're right, all the traffic is coming from Marsh Hawk, really, on the spot that you'd be using. You're, you know, so, I, you know, that's why I don't have an issue with it, I just think that we need to clean up the drive, the other driveway, and, and staff's got to just look at the, you know, the road layout. Is this a variable width?
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. So, at least we have, no, on paper, it's a variable width, you know, that's what I'm talking about. So, you know, the last thing we want to do is do improvements, people don't think of improvements. The word improvement can mean something else. So, but at the same time, you're really not, you're not, there's no, there's nothing negative to this at all. It's just that the restriction that was in the, in the subdivision, you know, it's over 30 years old now, right? Or it's just about 30 years. I think it's 30 this year.
It is. 2014.
So, you know, I don't, I don't think that there's going to be an issue with it myself. I think we're just formalizing an existing condition, and, so that you can, so that you can change the ownership on paper to it and create this lot. So, I'm inclined to, you know, if we have to continue this, Barry, for one more hearing for staff purposes, I think that that, I don't know if that's where we're leaning, but I'm inclined to approve it, but I'm also inclined to continue it.
Yeah, let me go to Mr. Borchard for a second. Go ahead.
The staff has recommended in the staff report that we would have a discussion about this, whether we would encourage this. This applicant could be the first one on this section of road. And I've heard Mr. Lowell and others always talking about 10, 20 years down the road, but we have to look at this Somerset Road down the road, 20, 10, 20 years, because it's going to get busier and busier and busier, with these lots potentially following in this applicant, Mr. Sumatero's lead. If we keep that in mind, I think it's a healthy discussion, it's been a good discussion, but this applicant is sort of the first one, and I think that's pretty important to remember that. Even though some of us may object to it, I think it's, it's pretty important, because I think you're going to see in the next few years more of these.
Is there anyone, all right, I just want to make sure the board has kind of settled itself, there's nothing else remaining from staff? Not hearing anything. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Not seeing anyone?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion is made and seconded. Okay, and I'm going to activate Diane on this, because this is a special. Go ahead, stop me.
There are two parts to the issue, the two special permits, the driveway, the secondary lot, which can utilize an alternate, but then you have the subdivision modification.
Which will just be simple majority on that part?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
All right, so, three different sections to this, Leslie, I'm sorry, let's just, just run it through me again. Is the covenant?
Yep.
The, the secondary lot provision.
Yep.
Special permit, right?
Excuse me. The secondary lot.
Requires a special permit.
Requires a special permit.
Okay.
And then modification to the subdivision, which is a majority of the elected members.
So, there's only two things.
No, the driveway, you got to have the access.
The driveway.
Right.
The covenant and the subdivision modification.
Got it.
To allow the driveway.
Okay.
And the covenant is, covenant is just regular board, right?
It's special permit.
Not the special permit.
Covenant sec, okay.
So, the driveway is a special permit, the secondary lot's a special permit, but the modification of the subdivision's only the four of us.
Yes.
Correct. Got it. I just want to make sure. So, Diane, I'm going to activate you on those, those two issues.
Okay.
Okay.
As they come up, so go ahead.
I made the motion to close the public hearing. Did we already, we haven't finished that?
Uh, I, I realize that, that's okay. So, I'm also going to act, just for sake of purpose here, even though things are a little bit split up, I'm still going to activate it for all three, three issues.
Well, she can't sit on the modification of the subdivision, so only the two.
Okay, we'll just break it into its component pieces. We'll close the public hearing on those first two issues, and then we'll close the public hearing on the third issue.
All right, so, I made a motion to close the public hearing on the secondary lot and the driveway issue.
Yeah, I seconded it.
All right, Diane, you're activated for both of those, just to close the public hearing. Is there any further questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the secondary lot.
And...
I'll get there, I'll take that separately.
All right, I'll second that.
All right, so, on that first issue, to approve the se, okay, to approve that. Discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the driveway modification, driveway cut.
Yep.
Based on the things we talked about earlier, that we're gaining a covenant unit, affordable housing, given the existing improvements on the property, the configuration of the lot.
Right.
This is not to set a precedent for anybody else who has frontage on Somerset, and the condition is that one of the driveways on Equator Drive is to be removed at their election, whichever one.
Yep. Okay. If we're all clear on that?
Any conditions on the driveway, does it need an apron or anything?
No, it can't have an apron.
Okay. Are we all clear on that?
There's not a secondary going.
Discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Okay, now...
Now, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on the subdivision modification.
Second.
That motion's now made and seconded, and this is now just the regular board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision modification, basically with the same caveats that we had on the driveway.
Right, on the driveway.
Okay. If that motion's made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for working with us.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem. Okay.
Okay.
All right, next thing before us is 7786, which is Vine Cliff Road subdivision at 47, 47B Cliff Road for the applicant. Mr. Malloy, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Dan Malloy, Site Design Engineering for the applicant, along with attorney Arthur Reed. I'm here before you this evening for a definitive subdivision, approval required, requesting approval for three lots located in the residential zone R1, properties located at 47 and 47B Cliff Road. The zoning underlying is 5,000 square feet per lot. The existing lot, as it stands, is about 47,000 square feet, and we're asking for three lots, as I said, and they're all oversized, ranging from approximately 10,000 over 20,000 square feet each. The proposal is to service the three lots with a new road coming off Cliff Road, about 200 feet long. We're asking for waivers for the project to allow the use of a 20-foot right-of-way instead of a 40-foot. The access drive will be a 12-foot gravel or shell pervious roadway with shoulders. The reason for the waivers, again, is to just make these lots more presentable, more useful. We're not trying to maximize all the property, like I said, we could get at least four lots on that property if we pushed it. We can get to four lots without any waivers, which, just in this case, trying to make three lots to make them better lots for the area. The project is in keeping with the neighborhood in terms of its density. The lots are oversized, so they equal or bigger than a lot of adjoining properties. We are requesting, like I said, the waivers, we're not offering to restrict second dwellings, so there's three lots, it could be two dwellings in each lot for a total of six dwellings. That's essentially the project, there's water and sewer, there is no wetland or dangerous species issues related with the road, we are the subdivision itself.
Great. Anything else? We're good? Board members, any questions? Yeah, Carl, and then I'll come to you, John, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I, Mr. Reed, welcome. I'm not authorized to vote on this, I don't believe, but I had a comment that I wanted to put on the record. Is that elm tree on the corner there, a town tree, is that coming down, or is that going to be out of your way, right at the corner where the road starts?
That is a town tree, we're working around it, we won't be taking any of the street trees out whatsoever.
Thank you.
Board members, anything else? Anything, staff? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so, as part of this subdivision is, will there be a restriction for no further subdivision of the lots?
We can do that, sure.
Also, Mr. Chairman, through you, this is currently R1, as you said. Are duplexes included in your future here at all? So, a restriction?
I can't, I certainly can't conceive of anyone wanting to do duplexes on these lots.
So, a restriction against that then would be possible? I know one issue that we have had along Cliff Road is the narrowness of it. I don't know if it's the level of trees that are located here makes any sense, but you are, we, you're asking for any interior waivers of sidewalks or bike paths, correct?
Yes, we are.
That's all my questions for now.
All right, great. Hearing nothing else from, oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Mr. McGlaughlin had the floor first, I apologize if I don't come to you.
I had a question to Colonel Pacey, I have a question for him.
Pacey. Pacey, please.
Hello, Mr. McGlaughlin, Happy New Year.
I have a question. Years ago, I remember, at the end of this property, growing from this road over, and then over the bank.
Right.
There's a pond down there.
There still is.
Yeah.
It's a small wetland area.
Yeah, you're right, and if I, I remember, there's a pipe sticking out up top, it drains, I think, when you go across the street from this property, from Cliff Road onto the, it used to be the baseball field in the 1800s, but anyway, I understand that all, there's a wetland in there, and there's a catch basin, and I think that drained across the street to this, eventually it went over into that pond. I was wondering if you have knowledge of that pipe?
Don't think, there's no, there's no knowledge of municipal piping through this property to that low area that I'm aware of, Dan?
No, there's not, nothing we know of, no.
I'll go look, again, I'm just curious, because it rang a bell with me, don't, just, make a spot it, you know?
I mean, I believe the pipe's there, I just certainly don't know anything about it connecting through this property at all.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
My, my, my report shows a number of comments that actually Dan and I have discussed, they're all relatively minor in nature, I see no, no issues whatsoever.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lowell, did you have something?
Yes.
Please.
Improvements, I'm just talking to Andrew about what he sees for public benefit improvements for this. There's some, there's some issues on this road as far as like what was done, you know, with the bike path and how it stops at Shriver and Turnpike, and then you still have that existing condition of no sight, and I think that the town is looking at, trying to, you know, get some kind of a sidewalk or widening a little bit to make it get up to the next section of road, which is plenty wide enough, you know what I mean? So, Andrew, what did you suggest, how many lots, how many dwellings are they adding to this lot, to the, with the subdivision?
Well, there's a net addition of up to four, right?
Correct.
I know the place, I was in there the other day, I've been there a million times.
And I believe the board has at least looked at, was it 2,000 per lot, per dwelling?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, you're saving the tree, obviously you can't cut the town tree down. It'll probably die after the project is done.
But, well...
Oh, they have, yeah.
Let's, let's...
Is that, is that the one?
Okay, wow, I didn't know that. So, that would be my only thing, would be a contribution to that area's improvement of that, of that, whatever we specify per dwelling. Other than that, I mean, it's, what about those small trees inside, those are going, aren't they? Saw the thing.
On the inside, we're only taking, when you come in.
Yeah, on the right.
Roads that look to the right.
Yeah.
We have to take out two, a movement, we want to keep as many as we can.
Can they be scooped up?
If they can be, they will. Some of them will stay, at least one or two have to go, but I understand what you're talking about, the trees on the right, we do, we're going to try to preserve as many of those as we can, definitely. It lays out very well to use those as street trees, as they sit.
Yes, those are nice, yeah.
In terms of improvements right in Cliff Road, our side of Cliff Road, we have that, is an enormous street tree you're talking about, and then just beyond that, there are at least half a dozen additional street trees against the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, there isn't a lot of room to make improvements on our side necessarily, but the other side is open with the park, but our side is very, it's already trees.
No, no, that's what, Andrew, what do you?
Mr. Chairman, through you, that... Please, please.
The opportunity, I think, would have to be on the opposite side because of the, the trees and everything else along here. The idea would be to move more of the sidewalk from the road right-of-way to the park boundaries.
Yep.
And gain some additional...
Width.
Width in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, this is a, this is a challenge to create some sort of a connection, either, you know, through pavement markings on site, Mike Burns, ask him, he'll, he'll let you know about how some of the ideas have been received over the years, but I think some sort of contribution is warranted here, considering that, you know, the way, I'm not saying that waivers shouldn't be granted, but this is a high-value area, and certainly there is going to be some additions here that could be mitigated.
I think I see Mr. Reed acknowledging that would be...
I think, I think we can work with that, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes. Two, 2,000 per dwelling, thank you for consideration. Is there anything else through the board? This is not a special permit, right? Just board majority?
Yep, somebody's got to agree about.
Hold on, hold on, I haven't even opened the public hearing yet. Now, is there anyone in the public who'd like to address this issue? Mr. McGlaughlin's got a little bit of a concern that he needs to address. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this? Hearing none? Do you want to close the public hearing?
Is it a public hearing? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, it's not, no, just jury.
There's only three of us.
There's only three of us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve with the payment of 2,000 per new unit, which would be 8,000 for its mitigation of traffic and safety.
Okay. And were there any other conditions, Andrew, that we need to address or we could here? All right, so, the motion...
Well, you did mention a couple of other conditions.
That's what I thought.
No further subdivision.
No further subdivision and no duplexes.
Yeah.
All right, so...
It's allowed by that, totally different. I'll second that.
All right, so we're all on the same page, yeah. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those approve, those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Okay, so we have three warrant articles that we need to discuss. First one is a zoning map change from limited commercial to commercial downtown properties at 7, 9, and 11 North Water Street. Andrew, Leslie, did you have something?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, there was a concern about a repetitive petition and what that might mean for this article. I've talked to town council, that is not an issue, so the board can go ahead and move forward with closing the hearing and taking a vote.
Let me just see if there's anyone who will... Is there anything from the board, first of all? Not hearing anything at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this warrant article?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Motion to endorse.
A favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation.
Yeah. And, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you. Yes, have a good night. Thank you, Doc. Take care. Next is a zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter 139, Section 2 of the Code of Town in Nantucket to insert a new definition of ownership. And staff, please.
Mr. Chairman, we talked about this one at length at the last meeting. The board wanted input from council.
Yep.
I talked with them about it, and they did not have any concerns about the proposed language.
Okay.
They're fine, yes.
And, board members, is there anything you want to discuss on this? If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this, the public hearing is still going.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That's the unanimous vote on both issues by the board. Last but not least is a zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter 139, Section 2 of the Code of Town in Nantucket to insert definition of municipal...
I do have a question on this.
Let me just turn to staff first, please. Mr. Boris.
Mr. Chairman, so the question was adding the word commission, which our moderator opined, the final authority, I will say, that was within the scope, and town council has agreed, so we would recommend that we add that word as part of an amended support for this particular article.
Okay.
Go ahead, Linda.
No, that was it.
Okay. So, hearing no other comments from the board at this point, this, again, is a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this, hearing no comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And, second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Motion to make a favorable recommendation with the amendment of the adding the word commission.
Got it. And, second to that.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Ah, let me see here.
I'm going to want to take a break after these.
Do you want to do it now, since we closed all the public hearings?
Yeah, no, let's just do it. Just do these.
All right, so...
And then do the secondary dwellings, so...
Yeah, we'll do the A and Rs, the secondary dwellings.
So Eleanor can go home.
Because we've got, we've kind of tackled most of our public hearing base.
And that zoning stuff.
So, ladies and gentlemen, let me declare like a controlled, brief, five-minute recess at this point, if you need to.
No, let's just get through the A and Rs.
Let's, we closed our public hearings, let's just do it. Well, this'll only take a minute.
Well, I don't want anybody who's sitting in here having to sit here for that.
Is there anyone here who's here specifically for any of the A and Rs or second dwellings?
Yeah, so let's just do it.
All right, so let's get through, yeah, let's see where we go.
I'll make a motion to endorse all of the A and Rs. 7787, 7788, 7789, 7790, 7791, 7792, 7793, 7794, and 7795.
And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Second dwellings, there are four second dwellings, Boris, at this point? Not hearing the board wishing to isolate anything else? Do you want to do the same thing that you just did?
I'll make a motion to approve T. Ticket, Three Wing Spread, Myra Escobar, Eight Nobodir, Five and Nine Maduey Creek, and Jerem and Victoria Kelts, per staff recommendations.
And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Want to try now? What do you want to do?
Eleanor wants to go home, so let's just get through the zoning.
Wow, you have commanded some authority tonight.
We have previous plans, we can hold this for a second.
Yeah, we do have previous plans. Okay. So, next thing before us is 21-05, Nantucket Properties, 1442 Nobodir Farm Road. Is there anyone here for that?
Those are those places with the, the duplexes, right?
Multi-family. Staff says no.
Howdy.
Hello, John Henneke, trustee at Trade Win Condos. Basically seeking relief from the restriction that was imposed by condition number eight, and it pretty much limits the use of the condominium to year-round occupancy and seasonal, and I'm a year-round resident.
There is also, Mr. Chairman, a ZBA case that goes along with this one.
That's correct.
And I know staff had some discussion about this. Andrew?
I've also got one or two comments as well, too, but do you want to start first, or you want to go, or?
I know, I talked to Leslie about this this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
This particular project, and there are others as well, was approved by the planning board as a multi-family special permit. And several town meetings ago, the multi-family special permit was removed from the zoning by law, and all of these permits are now pre-existing non-conforming uses. So, anyone who wants to amend the permit now goes to the zoning board of appeals as a pre-existing non-conforming use rather than the planning board. The multi-family permits are sort of unique in that there are conditions imposed by the previous special permit that was issued by the planning board that now has to be modified by the ZBA, and on top of that, there's a condition, or not a condition, a covenant enforceable by the planning board restricting the occupancy.
To year-round, to year-round.
So, to year-round or peak seasonal employee occupancy. So, anyone who wants to modify that has to go to both boards. To the zoning board to issue a new special permit, removing that condition, to the planning board to release the covenant. So, I, I think the board needs to consider the fact that these were created for year-round housing or for peak seasonal occupancy. They both addressed an important housing need on the island. They were developed at a density that wouldn't otherwise be allowed, and I don't have an exact count on the number of units, but there's around 100 units that are subject to similar conditions. And I've talked with several other associations that are interested in some form of a modification. All of these are limited to the occupancy requirements. They're also limited to the number of bedrooms, and this particular applicant's not seeking a modification on the bedrooms, but I know that other people may want to come forward and do that. So, I, I think this deserves a wider discussion other than just this particular request, and then base your decision on that.
So, I appreciate you laying the groundwork behind this, because you're bringing up an incredibly important issue about why do we even allow this to begin with?
Mm-huh.
I think that, given the number of units as well there as well, too, and some of the special considerations that were made for this, I, I for one on this board am not just willing to say that all can be restored to what people may want to do with it. Affordable housing was created, that still is an issue to this day, and I believe that we need to remain true to that cause. If we're going to start releasing these back from the restrictions that were put upon them, I think there needs to be a quid pro quo back into affordable housing as well, too.
Well, they're not affordable.
But, okay, but into the affordable housing, but there is a mechanism. Let's just bear with me.
But they're not affordable, they don't have affordable covenants.
Right, but they were given special consideration.
For density.
Try to, to try to encourage some level of affordable housing. Maybe they don't, they don't need it strictly.
Don't use that word.
I'm going to use that word under, under a slightly different definition, okay?
There is one definition of affordable housing. That's what makes me uncomfortable.
All right, are you just, you know...
But it just makes me uncomfortable.
I understand how it makes you uncomfortable.
When you use that word.
I'm trying to... You know, why bother?
They're year-round, yes, Barry, but I'm just uncomfortable with that word.
You know, I'm sorry, this, I'm just trying to get a point across, Linda, and I know you're uncomfortable with it, but that shouldn't restrict me from at least having some type of dialogue, and I've told you already that I'm just trying to get some sense of this out there. So, pardon me for not using the specific words that you want me to do. I'm, I'm a little miffed by that.
No, Barry, I don't care what other words you use, but affordable has a definition, and this isn't, didn't meet it, so that's why I'm worried, I don't want to have people think that, that they're affordable.
Linda, do you have comment at this point? Because clearly, I'm just going to let you go.
But I agree with you everywhere else, but that word, that comment.
Do you have something you'd like to offer this board?
No, it's that they're not affordable units. They're year-round units, which is what we were after at the time, but affordable units on Nantucket and everywhere else in the state has a definition that they're under the 150 cap, you know, all this other stuff, and they have covenants on them, and they don't have affordable housing covenants on them, and they're not affordable units. They can charge whatever they want, basically, but they're year-round units. So, I'm concerned that we're leading people to believe that the MYPOD, or whatever those things are, the multi-family MFPOD, MPOD, are affordable units, and they're not. Some of them are kind of pretty expensive, actually.
Linda, Linda, I hear you. I have sat on the CPC, I have sat on housing things as well, too. I'm intimately familiar with what is involved here with the term affordable housing. I'm just using it on a much looser basis. So, I appreciate the education that I've already had. All right? And I'm, I'm really, I'm miffed at the moment. So, go ahead, board members, if you've got something you want to say, I'm just incredible.
I think that Wesley laid it out pretty well, but I do have a question. Is this something that we need to have an article for, Leslie, to fix this?
I don't believe...
Because, I mean, having them go to two boards is not free.
I think that you need to understand the point here that I think the chairman was trying to make, is that using these units for, for those other purposes is a zoning violation.
Okay, right.
We did not create this bylaw to create more market-rate seasonal rentals.
Yeah.
We did not do that.
No, that's right.
We didn't grant, we didn't allow for density to be exceeded to create units other than year-round units and housing for peak seasonal employees. So, that's the only reason we did this, and by location and by building characteristic, they tended to be less expensive. So, they tended to be lower-priced, but they didn't have, per se, a restriction on them. So, there is, in fact, the risk of using them for, for summer, non, non-employee, you know, or using them like hotel rooms or whatever. You're subject to a zoning violation for each and every time you do it.
And we never be able to, if we, so if we created that situation, never be able to enforce it. I mean, it would be a nightmare.
We'd never get them back.
There's enforcement mechanisms that...
Well, you know what I mean, like if it was common, it would be hard to, you know...
Well, that would have to be employed to enforce it, but, you know...
So, okay, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get my head around two different applications for each thing. That's all I'm saying.
Well, the two applications are there. I mean, you know, I would argue that it, and you should have a policy-level, just, you know, discussion about this. You know, if you're going to willy-nilly just let them go, I, I personally don't think that's a good approach.
Yeah.
Again, if we, if we want to review the minutes, or you want to take time to look at why we created this...
So, we would be in favor of seasonal, summer employee rentals, but not the high-end.
I think there's some questions the board should ask themselves. Will every, for, every four units, are you going to allow all of them to be converted? Would you allow some of them? Under what conditions would you, would, would there be some sort of a contribution towards other housing opportunities? Would there be, you know, I think, you know, anyone can come in and say, gee, we don't like the restriction, we want it lifted. I'm not saying you're doing that, but I'm saying that if there's over 100, are you going to just allow them all to be released?
And, if I may, this is my point exactly to where I'm going to. I, for one, sitting on this board, would not vote in favor of that, given what took place to create this and the reasons under which it was done. What I thought might be a way to start working with this is for the people who wish to do the conversion, one thought was to do a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at a certain dollar per square foot for whatever, for the, for whatever part of the complex it is. At least it gives, at least there's equity there. There's, there's at least, we're treating them all the same way. So, it was just a thought, and, and it still helps in, in the end analysis, I think, towards some of the goals we're trying to achieve. So, that's just one thing I wanted, that's what I was trying to do, and thank you, Andrew, I do appreciate that. Go ahead.
That would mean we'd, we'd put this over and we would put this on for February 9th as a policy discussion, and while we come up with something in the meantime, and not make a decision on this, and ask the ZBA to hold off on this also. Is that where we're headed? Makes the most sense?
Go ahead.
I just...
I'm sorry, I believe the planning board already asked the ZBA to hold off on making a decision until you'd had an opportunity to discuss this. So, the applicant did not move forward at the Jan, oh, sorry, the December ZBA meeting. So, they were scheduled for December, they did not move forward. So, I don't know if that's something that you want to do, to hold them up another month at the ZBA, but I, I do know that even if the ZBA modifies the special permit, it doesn't mean anything if the planning board doesn't release the covenant.
Because I think we have to have some, a policy discussion like you want to have, and that would be next month, right?
Well, I, I just say, staff was pretty deliberate in, in their, in their report to us to say that that was a topic of conversation that needed to start surfacing tonight. So, I would like to say that over the course of the past two or three days, we all should have been thinking about it.
Well, I didn't know where to go with it, frankly.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
So, the goal here is not really to add summer rentals. That's not what we're trying to do. Like, I own the house, and I can rent it out for the summer. It's basically an issue where someone's trying to sell to a dentist who comes here off, has an office here, has an office off the island, does some pro bono work on the island, but he ran into a snag because he couldn't have a second home, in theory. So, it's, the goal is not to use it as summer rentals, weekly, for the season, something of that nature.
But he's here year-round. Well, he, he uses it as his residence, year-round, whenever he's here.
Well, his real residence is, I mean, he was, that...
Wouldn't that qualify?
Didn't happen, but his real residence is somewhere else. is somewhere else.
But Andrew, wouldn't that qualify? Wouldn't the way he's using it?
And...
If he owns it, he's staying it himself?
And that is kind of what we're trying to, that's what we're asking for, not for use of summer rentals. It's someone buys it as an owner, like this particular person.
It'd be owner-occupied.
But it's not their primary residence.
Do we care if the primary residence is there? There's nothing in the bylaws except it has to be their primary residence. So this has to be used year-round, right, Andrew?
It's year-round occupancy, so it's one person using it year-round sporadically. I don't...
And the goal is really not to live, the restrictions, it's really to add to it that a non-year-round owner can stay there.
So long as it's owner-occupied, not for rent, unless it's for rent to a year-round occupant or a peak seasonal. Isn't that something, a way to go? That it be owner-occupied?
Where do you draw the line at that, though? I'm going to buy one of those units and I'm going to be a year-round person and only uses it two weeks a year.
Whatever, no one else is using it. It's owner-occupied. I think the owner-occupied thing is where I'd be headed.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, having, again, in this case, we have eight of the units, you know?
Yep.
And if, if you vary it for one, but I, you know, again, if you vary it for all, then you're right, it can just be a vacation rental property, I mean, or vacation owner property. And again, that really wasn't the intent. I mean, this particular application sounds a little bit different, because there's at least a year-round presence of the proposed owner, at least it sounds that way. You know, as opposed to, I don't want to stay in a cottage, I don't want to buy a market-rate cottage, I'm going to buy one of these that has a restriction because it's lower-priced and then not follow the use provision.
Well, could he, his owner, fall under the year-round use of what he's suggesting of this particular person without violating the covenant?
Well, you might be able to make that sort of a finding.
What's the other...
You are the special permit granting authority, so...
But was this, Andrew, was this the only unit, or were there a few?
There's two units here, right?
Well, I'm asking on behalf of all eight, the condominium association.
Yeah, and that's where I have a problem.
We can't solve that tonight.
That's where I'm having a problem again. Because I think with all eight, I would dare say...
There's no...
Sorry. I'm just curious if all eight fall under the same set of circumstances.
Well, there's no cer, there's, this doesn't apply right now. It, with, where this came from, a sale was about to happen, and it actually fell through because the snag.
Yeah.
So at this point, there, this isn't an issue. It's, it was because of the sale that basically fell through.
Could I ask you, Mr. Chairman, so how many units have year-round occupants that live in them, of the eight?
One, two, three, four, five.
And, and how many have, or how many use for, say, a seasonal employee?
The other three.
The other three?
Yep.
Okay.
I think, I'd just say respectfully between you and I, you, with this one instance, you, you may have a fairly reasonable case to present. But, boy, that makes me real curious about how the other seven begin to flow. And I think, hopefully, you're hearing some of the questions that the board is endeavoring to wrestle with. So I think before we would bless the other seven, we'd need to have a much firmer sense of what is involved. Because realize, the more of these we start opening up, the more we've got to kind of follow true to certain letters of, of dealing with things, and under the reason why this was initially put in place. And I'll tell you, I mean, I know as one person who sat on this board when Anchor Village was proposed, there was, there was a lot of wrestling back and forth with how, with what the intent was with this, with the MPOD district, that those kind of almost went hand in hand with each other. So, like I said, having sat through it from the first day when it was happening, you know, I, I've got a slightly different perspective on how much I'm really willing to let go of that.
Can we not solve this tonight?
I don't think we're going to solve this tonight, but, you know, hopefully, I, I'm hoping that maybe you've heard some of our, our thought process here as well, too, and it might be, the applicant may be willing to redefine it just to this one particular, one particular apartment. But I think the others need a lot of thought, because I think your, your understanding, it can open up a lot more doors underneath it.
Are you suggesting, because again, we don't currently have a situation that needs this.
Okay.
And I'm not speaking on behalf of myself or any particular unit. There was a situation, but that still fell through.
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were talking present tense with all that.
This is to, in, going forward, well, this was, this all came about because of an instance.
Yeah.
That is no longer the case anymore.
Okay.
But this is to basically go forward now that we saw this, because basically, it, it can hinder people who may want to sell their units to, like this person, myself, but I'm a year-round resident, don't intend to sell, so it's, I'm not too bothered by it, but...
I just want Leslie to have a moment. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not an immediate issue pending, then perhaps the board could recommend to the ZBA that they also continue it? Would that be okay with the others?
I'll make that motion over to the...
And I actually put that in, a request in late today.
And ask the ZBA to continue again.
Second. All right, so the motion's being seconded, continue to February 9th?
And ask the ZBA to continue.
Yes, please. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Michelle Lee Lane, this is a, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. This is a Form J for lot release, lot number three.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? I trust you seconded that.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Guaca Dukes Road State Subdivision, again, Form J for lots 17 and 18.
Make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. John Anne Lane, roadway escrow account release of $12,069.38. And Leslie or Andrew, did you have something you needed to...
Oh, staff approval.
I just have one thing on this.
Please.
This is that little road up off Cliff.
Yes.
Yes. The improvement, improvements are complete, but I do need to confirm that there are adequate funds available in the engineering escrow account to close the project.
Want to continue in February?
So make a motion to approve pending that.
That's...
Okay.
That's what I'm doing, making a motion to approve pending further information of staff.
Okay, second.
Pending staff approval.
Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. There were a few ZBA cases. We've already commented on one at this point. Is there anything else?
No.
No? Okay. That brings us, I don't know if anyone, a few brave souls left out there at this point.
I guess we're going to take a break.
All right, we'll take a break. I didn't really see anyone out there. Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'm so sorry. Sure, just grab me a bag.
Who wants to change the color to yellow paint on Indian Street? Get rid of the horses. If you, if you and I could agree on that, I'd be so excited.
I think it's likely...
Those horses were not put in by the people who lived there, so they didn't have no permission.
There's your parking...
I don't know, somebody up there asked for a break, which I'm happy to strike.
People be parking in front of their houses for years.
Because the escrow, those horses, right there. Imagine...
I saw, I saw...
Right.
Can you hold that approval?
Parked in the dedicated, parked in the dedicated, from 15 minutes, which is not really...
That's what they do.
Right, right.
Till January 17th. Yeah, Dan's in there, he'll make sure it's pure.
Well, no, they're, they're highly loaded, lots.
We can do that.
I didn't know it could, that's why.
We can do it, but the applicant has to give us permission. That's all.
Let me, I should have, I should have, what I should, what I should have said was...
You can do that, it needs something in writing.
What I should have said was...
Because, fine, that's what I said.
If you don't put the mirror in, being not on sidewalk, it's going to... Because, because, now, if you, if you've been to your...
She goes, Richard, eh?
Here's to sidewalk, here's to, okay.
Four minutes for me, boy. Aren't you, uh...
Can I? Yeah.
What else am I going to say? Nothing else. Monday night. No, but, 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 but...
I would kill for a pack of oyster crackers.
There's something in the bylaw.
You don't need four votes to deny.
You don't try to have...
You need four votes to pass it.
It's not there, so you can, you can have two without a...
Anything that doesn't get four votes is an automatic denial.
It's crazy, there's some weird stuff there, check into that. Something like that happened, and I'm like, what was it?
Right, so they would have had to make a motion to approve, and then it...
I like the horseshit stuff, like we're doing on Cliff Road.
Yeah, you don't need...
Beautiful. You did that one out there, Cisco, it was already there, but it was...
Otherwise, you'd be in a situation where you'd...
Because it, because it's too fast, but, 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 it's good, because you don't have to back up.
That's right.
You're making so old, ladies, can do it. That's why, nobody got to do this, so you got to back up. You don't have to give it up.
We've been operating on that.
Oh, okay. Oh, you...
Why are you laughing? Because it looks like it's a...
They've been hard on themselves.
Well, so to cut a statement story...
Jesus.
At least we can, we can agree on that.
Right.
Actually, they could have.
Really?
Oh, my God, yeah, so...
I would think if I did, I would have...
He is really good.
No, I was, well, I was, well, I was supposed to have it tomorrow, and then we got the challenge board, and we also, yeah, some more senior people.
It's, it's, see, you got, it's...
It would have been nice if you had...
Well, I want to do it.
For two years.
Chamber.
And there's a...
Yeah, yeah.
That's a big deal.
Sweater, just a fan, please.
I didn't want this on, and I'm bored.
Oh, you're dead there, okay.
No, it's not posted or anything.
I'm, I'm, you know what, I was just, I was just saying, I was saying, she's got her stress down.
There's an idiot, just doing this.
Oh, man, really nice dinner somewhere.
I told, I told, I told, I told.
I'm glad you're glad you're glad, too, because, yeah, it's the same thing in my house, you're just valid, you're just...
Just come to an upper area with me, boys, you know.
Woo-hoo!
And that's definitely weird. Whenever I had a hearing in the same town, I had CCTV, you know, that we live in. Right.
All right.
Right.
If this was the...
Right. Double, 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 very...
I got it.
I never passed, she's three, she has no tips, standing very small.
No, no, she's red, no, no.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
She's all red, I just put her here yesterday. So she's...
She's all sad.
I had to stop trying to copy them, and I had to send them as a print job.
I have a sense that that daughter does...
It was something with the printer picking up the paper.
It would not print it up.
It was weird.
I think it's a dud.
I know.
Oh, did you pass those off?
I did.
This is the same one that I got, is one of the two copies that I got.
It's the same one.
Oh, yeah, I'll find it in just a second. I'm sure it is.
Oh, wait, you're some.
Yeah, I got it.
Wait, Andrew and I are missing...
Mine was the, I numbered my pages, too.
Oh, wait, where's mine, with the markups?
You ready? Pass. Andrew, Leslie, I'm sorry.
Kidding me, hold on.
Yeah, take your time, take your time. I'm, I'm not trying to rush you. That's not, before I let things slip here, just, don't let...
Can you snatch mine and put it up here?
I just want them to settle in first before we do it. That's okay, they're working on things. I told them they could have a minute. What do you, this is what I've got. Now, now, there are no page numbers, though, sorry.
Find it. Yeah. Is. Probably. Oh, okay, all right. I'll look again. Okay, we're ready.
Okay, so, ladies and gentlemen, we're duly reconvened at this point. Mr. Board should just add something under probable comment, so, if you would, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know the hour is late, and I'd like to just go, yes.
I'm sorry, Carl?
Oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry.
That's quite all right.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to offer a couple of comments regarding the last two meetings. December, there was a, this is a general comment, this is not directed at anybody.
Yep.
And I promised to keep this very brief.
Yep.
So we can all go home soon. There was some conflict in December 8th regarding the White Elephant proposal and the Hooper Farm Road farm, additional dwelling proposal, how much to put into the account for the sidewalks and such, like pass, the, the, there was some strong opinions expressed about the White Elephant proposal, and there has been some disagreement tonight on various things. And what I'm just getting at is, that being said, I hope that since I joined this board on November of 2013, that we can all continue to get along as well as we have in the past and not let strong opinions and strong personalities divide us. That being said as well, I would also comment that I have read the Code of Conduct for the town of Nantucket, and I have submitted a signed document to town administration that's testing to that effect. And I've also been put in this seat by the Board of Selectmen, which is the highest policymaking office in the, in the town, after-town meeting. And I take those two, I take the Code of Conduct very seriously. I, I strive to be a professional, and I strive to be a good listener. I have tremendous respect for everybody sitting at this table, that goes for staff as well. And I really hope that we can continue to get along well, I think we do. And, you know, the Code of Conduct is something I also take very seriously. And we got a lot of work to do in a boom town, there's going to be a lot of applicants, the economy is rolling, so I hope we can roll up our sleeves this year and get to work. And I really have learned a lot from all of you, and I hope to continue to do so. And I'm enjoying this, and I, I enjoy everybody's comments and the challenges that we have to face together, and I hope we can continue to do that. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. Okay, Mr. Horse, you're up.
Okay. It is, as you well know, town meeting time. The warrant comes together and is adopted on the 21st, which is next Wednesday.
It is?
Yes.
Is it?
The adoption of the warrant article, so...
I thought...
Nope.
Nope.
This is of the final warrant article, so this will be of all our planning board-sponsored articles, citizen articles are already in, and any other of the various articles that are coming forward.
The FinCom, just, the FinCom says we can mutate the HDC articles right up until February 9th.
That's different, that's, that's...
Not zone.
No, that is the final...
You take the HDC articles right up until February 9th.
That's different. That's... No, that is the final warrant with the FinCom recommendations, which happens in March. So the 21st, though, is the last time for either the article is included or it's not. It doesn't make it. It's, there's no tweaking or whatever. Is everyone clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Right. So we've had a talk on our articles before. We've been struggling to get them all produced. We have maps that are unfortunately not completely ready, but we want to go quickly through here and I might suggest that we have some sort of a follow-up meeting before the 21st, if it's at all possible. I know we have a holiday in there and a Tuesday night, which I know is problematic for some of our members, but anyway, we can, we can come back to that. But I'll just walk you through quickly the articles that we have. We had to cut back from our original list that we had given you, so, which some of you thought, I think, it might have been a little overly ambitious, so... Now, I've numbered these pages and, you know, it's, I'm going to go through here, so Article 1, which is the allowance for transient residential facility in ROH within a half mile of the CDT. And, Mr... This is not the time to go over wordsmithing. This, we just need to really stay at a concept level here.
About whether to proceed or not.
It should be ROH and SOH. There are B and Bs out there also, like the Summer House. And there's a couple others. It shouldn't just be ROH, it should be SOH because they have the same characteristics.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to comment?
Yeah.
This, this really came about very specifically to deal with an issue that came out of Brant Point. I'm really not comfortable expanding this at this point. I really believe we should stick to... I, I think that this combined with the other article is actually quite an elegant way of dealing with the problem that was raised before us. This will allow not only the existing ins to stay within conformance, but it brings all the other ones into conformance as well.
Does it reach the beachside?
No, but the beachside, I believe it's now in CN.
This was about...
No, the only other question I have on that, the half mile will do it, but weren't we talking about them being allowed by special permit?
They would be allowed by special permit.
It's not in here. Is it in the other section, allowed by special permit? Or that language should be added here?
It's in Section 2. Instead of the "yes," it should be "SP." Section 2.
I don't understand what you mean by "yes." Am I missing something in this?
In Section 2, the "Y" should change to "SP," which stands for special permit. Article 2 is the change of these various properties from limited commercial to ROH and the harbor side village to commercial neighborhood.
Anybody see anything?
No. Again, this is... I don't believe there was a follow-up meeting of this particular work group, but again... So this, this is the last of the limited commercial properties. And we would actually be on target to eliminate that district, which was supposed to be this year.
Okay.
Article 3 is RC to ROH. It's Union Street, Washington Street, Duck Pond Lane. This is what we discussed as part of the Mariner Lane subdivision.
Miss Duck Pond Lane.
Is off Washington Street. It's three properties on Washington Street and then all residential properties on Union.
It doesn't look like it covers all the Union Street properties.
It doesn't. Some would remain in RC right now that are a mixture of commercial for later study.
Where's the group that backs up to the town parking lot? They're still in ROH.
That was already changed to ROH last year.
Okay, so we did get some of it there. Yeah. This is just the rest of it.
This is Union Street beyond Francis. Going out of town.
So 56 Union Restaurant?
Stays in its current zoning district.
Okay, so this is like Mello's property.
Correct.
Conso.
Yes. Article 4 deals with the, an area in Sconset along King Street. West Sangati changing that from SR1 to SOH. It's part of your, the HDC boundaries and again, I think it's consistent. Article 5 introduces a new zoning, two zoning articles, R5 and R10 Limited. It's an idea that we've talked about as a way to replace the R1 district. So it has some limitations by not allowing duplexes. It has some different, a ground cover that's lower, closer to R1. We're still working out some of those details. And Pine Valley has asked to be put into this R10 Limited. You know, they have some deed restrictions that are expiring. So they've, they offered, they were one of the first groups to be in our rezonings back in 2008 and '09. So they would be offering to go to this R10 Limited.
In the other chart in 16, R10 and R20
Yes.
Are allowed to reduce your side yard setback from 10 to 5. So if you're going to add the residential 10 Limited in that chart in 16, you should probably add that also. Does that make sense?
There's a section at the beginning of the bylaw, I think it's Section 5, that says unless otherwise specified, R10 is treated the same as SR10 as R10 Limited, so we'll add that to make sure that it's covered consistently.
I guess it had to be in there somewhere, so it wasn't left there.
Okay.
Article 7, we've merged a few requests into one article. This is, we've called this miscellaneous because it involves a single property or one or two properties, small group. So Section A of this is, there's a single property on Appleton, which is across the road from R10. It's an existing duplex and on a lot that meets R10 standards, so we're merely extending the line across the street. Section B is a group of properties, Westchester, New Lane and Wiresway, that are currently in R1 that are closer to ROH. Wiresway is a tiny road that runs off of, near the cemetery. The edge of the cemetery. It's the last house on that particular road. As you head towards Westchester on New Lane. It's a little tiny road on the side.
I mean, it is so tiny, you don't even know it's a road. It's next to Grove Lane.
Got it, Andrew.
Section C deals with Somerset Lane. We, I want to say maybe four years ago, changed a number of the properties from LUG 2 to R40. And we moved that into the country district. Now the new owners have changed their minds and want to be joined with their other peers on the road, so, for consistency. So that involves the zoning change and the overlay district change. What I'm, what is Article 8? Zoning map change, RC 2 to R5 and CN Old South Road. This is the Richmond Company properties, which again, we still have some finalization to do. We also have some RC 2 areas on Surfside Road that we're looking at. Again, I don't have those finalized, but part of the overall master plan to reduce those areas and... Coming later. I did receive another request to look again at the RC to CN on Sparks Avenue. There's five properties there that we put off last year. That would be a repetitive petition, so the planning board at least at its public hearing would need to vote by a four-fifths majority on that, if that were, were to proceed, so at this point, I'm preparing that article again, unless I hear differently. Yep. Article 9, this is the Powers' property along Hummock Pond Road. And you remember, it was, I believe in 2009, we had an article to change this around, to create a small village neighborhood district here. I've met with the Powers and we have two districts to phase out here. The R2, R20 district, which is on, covers a single lot on part of the property. And to implement our village neighborhood and village tech district on some of the property. So or a combination of village, residential, village tech and VN in the small area. I think that this is similar to what we had been looking at at the brewery, so this deals specifically with this area. And I think it's a good, it will be a good compromise for everybody. Article 10 is an area, well, I need to reserve a place saver. There's an LUG 2 to R40 area that I still need to prepare. And this basically includes the Evergreen Evergreen Way area, which is in the town overlay district and in LUG 2, so it's a mismatch. I also have a single property on Wera, Wera Lane that would be in that group. The article that's outlined here, you've had different representatives talk to you about. It's the South Shore Road, Rachel Drive, Zachary Way, Trip Drive, Korea Lane and also an area in Sconset. This proposes to change this area from LUG 2 to LUG 1. There's a pretty complete list of all of the properties included. These are country district properties, so they are, they wouldn't go to the R40. They would stay in a country overlay district. There's issues that have been raised about certain deed restrictions and other things that are, will probably come up and we'll, we'll have to seek opinions on them as that happens. But there was strong, at least local, support from these particular areas. The next area is Article 11. It's on page 13 of your group and it's to... There's an area of the airport that the airport has asked us to look at. It says, "Article zoning map change, LUG 3 to R5 and/or CN and country to town overlay district adjustment."
The one that says miscellaneous, Andrew?
You just finished off with Zachary and South Shore. Yeah, it's really just small. Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
What we're talking about here is a portion of the airport property that they are looking to potentially surplus. So it's the area north of the park. Park, I'm trying to think what they call that, Park Lane. Or Nobodyer Meeting House on Nobodyer Farm Road.
And R5?
R5 or CN is the potential there. CN is bigger, but, or it could be a combination of. It was RC 2 until we changed it. Nobodyer Meeting House is an R5 development. If you wanted to include another R10, we could certainly do that. If you want that to be an option.
Said the airport was, was really kind of drilling for this one, so...
They're looking to, we, we've had discussions about them participating in helping to create more housing.
Yep.
And R5 is in the neighborhood.
But, you know, it's probably better to leave it at R5 because if it, if it does get challenged in any way, shape or form, if you expand the size of the lots, that's, that's actually...
R5 is a minimum?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd sort of like, if it's bang enough against LUG 3, somewhere we generally don't go from 5 to 3. We go 5, 10, 20, if you, if you touch my drift. I'd be very uncomfortable going flat to 3. I think somewhere, I don't, I haven't looked at the map, so I don't know what exactly what we're talking about. How we're talking about. But I like it, I like it when the zoning graduates as opposed to at the 100 and 20.
But if you put it in as a, if you put it in LUG to R5 and then you increase the size of the lots, let's say to R10, you're, you're actually not falling outside the scope of the article, are you? You see where I'm going with that?
No, we could, I could add, because it's, I could add R10 as a possibility. And then through your deliberations, you can make a specific recommendation.
I, that may be the more prudent way to go, I think.
Okay.
That just gives a little more flexibility.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next article is the various open space related articles that are in the country overlay district, so it's largely RC 2 VR, LUG 1, LUG 2, 2 LUG 3. And this covers land bank acquisitions, wetlands, et cetera, et cetera. We have an article, a draft article for accessory apartments, so this would change the the allowance for accessory apartment to an accessory dwelling unit.
Which could be an apartment or a freestanding structure.
No. No, there's two. So number one, the accessory apartment or to change to accessory dwelling unit would only apply to a unit in an existing structure.
Like it is now.
Oh, okay.
Pretty much like it is now. It changes it and it would, instead of requiring a special permit and covenants and all this other stuff that nobody is going to do, it would make it more easy in certain districts. Without having to be year round.
Have been validated every year.
Because the accessory dwelling unit is more likely not to serve that population.
And so it doesn't have the 800 square foot thing and you have to be able to access it from inside your own house and all that other stuff is struck out.
Yes.
So there's no, no conditions on anything. It could turn into basically a duplex without being a duplex.
There's restrictions on size that are covered if you are proposing it as a tertiary unit, which is our next article.
Right, but I'm just, I'm concerned about the accessory apartment getting rid of some of the sizes and all that stuff because I hated that year-round opportunity. But it could turn into a duplex and not be a duplex because there's no limitation on size. It does take it out. So I'm kind of concerned about what makes this not a duplex.
Well, we can look at that.
So I think we need to take a look at some of the little controls in there.
Okay.
Because it could actually take over. Just to see if there's any restrictions other than that year-round thing that might work to keep it a necessary.
Okay. The next article is the tertiary dwelling unit. And this is attempting to sort of... And this is attempting to sort of merge the overall intent of the tiny house idea. Still needs a little bit of work here. And then some discussion about some of the density standards and.
Only by special permit, right? Can the planning do it?
No. That's something that we want to talk about, that it might be allowed by right under certain density standards and then might be special permit under others.
And only one per lot?
Yes, one per lot, not one per 2,500 square feet.
I was wondering if that, okay, get a 3 or 4 piece of lot, you're a little tiny house, gee, forget the 40B.
Major, minor site plan review, Leslie has a fairly extensive article there that really will require your study.
Yep.
16, which is sort of towards 1, 2, 3 from the end.
Is that, is that rewrite dealing with what we ran into with what's my calls? Was it Rosen?
Rosen was MRD.
MRD, yeah.
We did.
Over the MRD?
We did. Two town meetings ago, I think, we changed it to duplex. Basically, the major and minor site plan review is really just a housekeeping article.
Got it.
It's been added to and amended and there's lots of redundancies. It's rather confusing when you read it. I'm not intending significant substantive changes, really just a cleanup on that one.
And then we have miscellaneous technical changes.
Yep.
The first section deals with definitions. So accessory use, um, we have a section that doesn't make any sense at all since we allow uses by, we allow as accessory uses apartments that are habitated. So this really is in conflict with that.
Yep.
So that doesn't make sense. We wanted to clarify under apartment that you could have detached structures on the same lot, so we found there's some high costs, sometimes with a mixed use, um, that can be avoided if there's room for a separate structure.
Interesting.
So that works out. Breeze way, Leslie, you'll have to help me on that one.
Breeze way, there was an, an interpretation issue that recently came up about is a breezeway underground? So we're just trying to clarify that.
Got it.
Breeze way is, I think, what most people think of when they picture a breezeway.
Not much breeze underground.
Right. You can tell it's not underground, ground cover.
I was here for that one, last year.
Go ahead.
Capital improvements are, is a definition currently in our bylaw that has no reference whatsoever, so, and I don't know why we need it.
Agreed.
Nothing more than being structured. Duplex, um, if we are going to allow accessory dwelling unit or tertiary dwelling unit, we're just being clear that it's, goes from a duplex to a triplex or a, different.
And you need to fix that. LC is disappearing, yes. So whatever that is, you need to find something else to fix it.
Family, the word nonprofit housekeeping unit is an adjective that's not helpful at all.
Agreed.
And subject to wild, wildly varying interpretations, so.
Well, there is a federal, I dealt with it under the, there is a federal definition of family household. Have you looked at those?
I, I have, there's very clear language from the Supreme Court on this issue that keeps the people living together as, in a household setting can't be discriminated against.
Are we tracking that or is this not the?
Yes.
The ground cover, did you ever ask Marcus if he's willing to take this language now?
He just returned to work after an extensive absence, so I have not spoken with him about this yet.
We might want to do that so we don't get caught for a third time by his reinterpretation of something. So those people are still out there.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Household is a.
Sorry, Andrew.
Household is a repetitive, um, again, a fa, a family is living as a housekeeping unit, it's equivalent. Inclusionary unit is being cleaned up here to reference the correct section. Moderately priced unit is a term we, of ours we don't use, so. Occupied, yet another term that doesn't really help. Parking space, again, there's some various dimensions, so it's.
Yep.
You know, you better to simplify here.
Always.
Agreed. It's, it's funny, I think a lot of your previous definitions came in right around the time of the covenant, which is probably where they all drifted in at.
Well, most of these came in, 1972.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not to digress much.
Personal services, we are expanding that.
Sure.
A little bit and clarifying the English used.
I've got a question. Um, a lot of doctors' offices have been in their homes. It says, "Nah, you don't need this." Whereas Dr. Briggs is in his own home, Dr. Roy is in his own home, up there in town members, they move. It's, it's been something that's been accepted here that some doctors have their offices in their homes.
So you would add the word medical?
That would be home occupation.
Yes, because it's been, it's been part of the neighborhood, massage people, you know, that kind of stuff, acupuncturists, massage people.
Yeah.
I think, I, Leslie pointed out that I think you're mixing up home occupation.
Right.
Allows medical. This is personal services, which is a commercial.
Which is.
Medical has a whole different, different, yeah.
Okay.
I see.
Because it's usually the catchall, remember neighborhood service establishment.
Yeah, I see where, I see where.
Everything was in the same.
But no, I see where you're tracking.
Yeah.
That, that makes more sense to go this route.
And then again, the word used, it doesn't, isn't really a helpful definition that go to at all.
Gotcha.
Number two is to amend Section 25A, zoning enforcement officer is appointed by the town manager. That's part of the charter. So we can't have, the charter's going to override this angle, so it's just really clarification.
Yeah, particularly, um, regarding the fact that you even have a contract with the town to operate plus, you still don't have the right to hire. Should this not say town manager or designate?
Well, remember, this, the zoning enforcement officer was originally envisioned, I guess, as a person.
Right.
And now it is a series of duties. So there are multiple people.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you.
I know you'll get through this.
Yeah, Mr. PC.
You're almost done.
Mr. PC.
PC.
PC. So it doesn't really matter, you can assist town manager or not designate your contract?
No, because the actual employee performing the job is going to be hired through our contract. It's just that the, assigning the duties to that employee would still be done by the town.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't control the town under the contract.
Under the contract, the hiring is, is overseen by, by us.
Right.
With, with final approval or with detail power, you know, that's vested with the town administration.
Correct.
And there are multiple positions in the office that we choose the candidate that's hired, but the town manager has to appoint, just appoint the wiring, the plumbing, the building, really the building code officials are the ones that have to be appointed.
The same, it's the same issue again in Section 3.
Yep.
Zoning administrator is subject to confirmation by the town manager. Zoning administrator position, um, there's clarification. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, on the zoning board of appeals, so they hear and decide, is that right?
Yeah, they, they have a list of duties on the bylaw and for whatever reason, that wasn't listed. And that's the same language that's used for other things, so I just mimicked what was already in there.
We, we generally don't like these state references because they change or amend it over time. Section 30A, this clarifies that the planning board is special permit granting authority and we're adding for the tertiary dwelling, so that would be a special permit from the planning board.
Good.
And also the business, commercial, commercial industrial, industrial uses within the use chart.
Now, Andrew, you asked me at one point, is there a definition for business commercial?
Business commercial, commercial industrial is in our use chart.
Okay.
Okay, it's, they, there are groups.
So that basically is all commercial?
Yes. And it would move that category, this is something the board had discussed, they were interested in doing, so.
To the planning board?
To the planning board.
Does that guy just come up to the planning board and say?
Shall we talk about leaving that in technical or making it more obvious?
Well, right, and I, I guess one internal discussion that we've had is, do you think that this is really miscellaneous technical or does it deserve its own place?
I think it's miscellaneous, this would be the place to do it, but I was concerned that we should put it into 7. But that's just the chart.
Well, and I think, our point is, are, will people think that this is just sort of, you know, added in here in a sneaky way, tucked in with the technical amendments? Or should it be obvious in having its own article?
It does, it doesn't change the fact that you still need special permits to get certain uses.
That could tie in the special permit grant to the section.
Oh, no, we agree with that. It's just, does it, is it substantive rather than miscellaneous and technical in nature?
It's changing from the zoning board to the planning board.
I probably defer back to you guys at this point. You, you, you see?
No one has a strong opinion.
This fixes the whole.
I'm happy with it just the way it is.
I mean, I think you've done good, fixing what was removed out of RC 2, it wasn't allowed in CI.
This is different.
This is totally different.
Isn't that what you do?
This is the planning board, it's jurisdictional for commercial stuff.
Okay.
As opposed to the ZDA blackened at 1 and 2. We need that jurisdiction.
Right now, it's split between boards.
Yeah.
So we get it all.
I mean, if you feel like you need to isolate it now, I, I think the board seems fine with this, whatever direction you'd like to, that you feel like you'd like to proceed with it.
I mean, it just seems like it's.
I mean, I think, we almost, we almost think it should be special.
Yeah.
Then.
I mean, it should be, it is a change. I, I think it's a reasonable and I think it's a good change considering.
I agree.
We, you know, normally deal with these types of issues, but I don't know that it's so benign that it's just miscellaneous and technical.
And I think people respect the planning board and their judgment on these technical amendments and, and I'd hate to put something in there that's not.
No, this is, if you're, if you're going to clean that, I guess that's what I'm saying to you, if you're going to clean it up, then, you guys see enough code floating, not through heat, just here, but throughout the state, so you must have some sense about where to track to. So if you're going to, my book, if you're going to clean it up, do it the way that you really feel would be the appropriate and right way to do it.
So we fully support the article, but it's just that we're going to call it out as a separate.
It's fine.
I don't understand why we're striking out the next one.
Oh, this, number six?
Yeah.
Um, and I, I'm still contemplating it, but I believe this language is completely redundant and can be removed. And what we should add in its place, um, town council advised us that requiring a variance for an expansion of pre-existing non-conforming ground cover is not the proper route and that it should be done through a special permit.
Okay.
So.
We need to leave this section and put in a special permit.
Right, so we need to add some language in a couple of different places.
Yeah, we can't, we can't just strike it.
Seven, Leslie.
So that takes care of, actually, six and seven go together.
Okay.
What about B?
Same concept. 7B, this deals with, um, removal and reconstruction.
Right, we dealt with it in there.
Yeah, so at, at the beginning of Section 4, it says that removal and reconstruction can be done through a special permit.
Right.
Then it says, except that you can't expand the ground cover. So if that section is just eliminated, it takes care of the issue for that subsection.
But the word, the, the word is creative, you know, conforming, and that's the 33 is anything.
Yes.
Now, we dealt with that section where you could combine ground cover.
Yes, that was dealt with last year.
Okay.
And that's actually part of the same theme.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, from the same.
Yeah.
And this last one?
Yep.
Is there a question?
Last one.
Was 81L.
I don't have it, so it's.
I'm still kind of unclear about where we're going with that one.
Hang on.
And A doesn't have a parentheses?
But.
Those are.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now that you jostled Sarah at this point, did you, go ahead, Leslie or Andrew?
There was a, a word, again, an adjective, which I think had something to do with new non-conformities.
With new lots.
Or maybe just the word new.
It's just the word new.
So that basically, just the, it's, we would just say lots created pursuant.
Okay.
That the word new was causing some sort of.
Well, Marcus had a bizarre interpretation of what the word new meant. Seriously. It had to be brand new. Couldn't just be a lot that was created. It had to be a new lot that was created, which he interpreted to be a brand new. So it only applied to things going forward and it didn't apply to things that had happened in the past.
Oh, and 81L that had happened in the past was.
Or an adjust, or an adjustment.
Was an old lot.
It was old and an 81L that happened in the future was a new lot. See, that was my stupid question.
All right, enough, had a clarification.
So you're fixing this, right?
Yes.
This is getting.
So the word new would be stricken out.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Only other one that we haven't, I, I am working on a concept on the Malcolm property, which is on.
South Shore Road.
South Shore Road. They're currently in LUG 2, they are currently located in the town overlay district, which began the match. They were considered for this R40 zoning change in the past. We're looking at a combination of different types of lots with an open space component and maybe an affordable housing component as well, so I'll have that for you.
Special district for that?
No, it's just a combination of different zoning districts.
Gotcha.
It's not all R40.
I understand.
This property directly abuts the housing authority property.
Yeah, so.
And, and the stadium's cap. So again, as Ms. Williams said, she doesn't like to jump from 5,000 to 3 acres. Here we have, we jumped from 3,000 square feet to 80. So again, I think there's a better approach here.
I think R40 would be fine, I don't know about any of the rest of them.
I.
The way behind it is R40.
Again, I think we wanted to look at a, looking at a plan that might address other needs, including this through road idea and other things, so it won't be an article proposed on that.
Okay, good, good.
I'm not sure about that.
Oh, and.
Yes.
And, and one thing that is, that you have been reading about, it's kind of been a moving target, is the hospital.
Right.
For those of you who haven't read that, that the hospital plans to stay on their own site. There will need to be some changes and there may, and that may include a height allowance for the hospital to meet their space needs on that site.
Now, can I, all right, timeout, before we go, this, it would be modification to a special permit though, right, for the hospital?
It would be.
If they were just.
Zoning changes that would allow the planning board through site plan review to make changes. The hospital is a, is a use by right in the CN district.
Okay, all right.
They're in CN now, right?
Yes.
They're going to get rid of those houses and all of that stuff.
Well, that's, no, no, that's okay, so.
There's, there's broad. There's broad discussions and there's nothing.
I understand.
There's different potential sites on that existing land.
Correct.
That haven't been finalized. There's been discussions about relocating buildings or, you know, in different locations. So, um, I don't have a specific thing for you at this very moment.
I didn't think you would.
But there will be something.
Yeah.
Is it part of that?
But nothing will involve Mel Hill Park or any, any.
Yeah, that's right.
Is part of that in? Can we, if we're starting moving stuff around, stuff around, it's gonna have to go. As part of that, can we realign? Prospect?
Run about.
Can we at least get it realigned? Well, if everything goes away, so it's open, it's all blank.
Well, you know what? Because I'm gonna tell you, let's.
They're in agreement with anything.
Can I, can I just say something? I don't want to have this discussion tonight, right now, because there's a mixed set of opinions here.
Because we're gonna go against Kyle's new bylaw, getting along, and whether that's going against that or not.
That's why we're not gonna have that discussion tonight. Thank you.
Did I say bylaw?
All right, so.
That sounds really interesting, since everything should be needed probably, and the one thing that's holding us up is that.
How much height do they need for a helipad?
High school auditorium is pretty high, it's pretty close.
Right.
Can I helicopter pad up on the roof?
But to.
Originally, I don't know that.
Definitely gonna be on the building now.
It's, it's possible.
I don't think they have any choice.
You know what, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time speculating because there's, there's definitely a number of different potentials that can emerge out of this. I don't think they're even quite sure what the configuration's gonna be, so let's not spend a lot of time conjecturing tonight on this.
Do you need building changes throughout the, you gotta do it now?
I. Uh, may, that may boil down. I don't, I think they got a ways to go between you and I.
Yeah, the, the selectman went about coastal building.
Andrew, have they talked about doing this?
What?
The hospital with you? About us, us, the planning board doing something?
Yes.
I mean, if you.
I have a draft, they submitted some draft material, and we're doing that of how we would put it in our bylaws, so there will be some article that, you know, coming forward likely.
Okay.
It's something that.
Are, are the two of you good with him bringing that level of article? Okay, fine, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I guess there's one other, or two other potentials the selectmen have asked town council to look at.
Yes.
Some sort of reduction of liability for building in.
Like environmentally sensitive areas for coastal erosion.
So we have some sort of draft article that I've seen that.
What's getting go?
It's, it would require some sort of sign-off.
Yes.
From who?
Part of, if you are building in an area, there would be some sort of waiver or something. No, it'd be a waiver if you, you acknowledge that it's a hazardous area and you're building it your own risk.
It, it, yeah, essentially removes certain.
Oh, 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 town liability.
Right.
Oh, so erosion.
Right.
We have, we have a district called the Island Perimeter District, so it's, I'm not sure exactly how this is gonna fit in, but again.
I, yeah, okay, all right.
If it's. The other thing.
Yes.
May come up. Health inspector had talked about some changes, perhaps in the animal regulations. I don't know if Board of Health intends to adopt anything.
I think that's not happening right now.
I think that.
Be a crowd people for that.
The, the difference is, you know, for people who have small-scale family-related things to, there was an issue where it was a much larger operation.
Oh, yes, chickens.
And that, there's been some fallout as that has moved around and certain neighbors are like, I'm fine with five or six sheep. You're saying there's a hundred?
Well.
And I'll take it now.
Five thousand chickens?
Their roosters have started.
I, I, if.
Shouldn't have a rooster. My father always told me.
So.
Don't have a rooster.
It's.
They cost you more money here.
I don't, I don't know for certain, but we are looking at, at use chart amendments. So right now, any agricultural use is allowed by right, and there may, may propose. We may propose.
Does it have a, has it anything to do with the guy who was kicked out of Madison Property?
No, he just got all kinds of crap. All unaffirmative.
But.
There's a scale there that, there is a scale there that raises.
Yeah.
I think we, we've been, at the Z D A over the time that I was in twenty-five years I was there, I used to get called all the time about, can I have an animal, can I have a horse, can I have a chicken, can I have this, can I have a goat, can I have this? And there wasn't anything to stop them, especially when the area was indesolate. And they caused a nuisance. It couldn't be considered a tractable nuisance. So you do need to do some of the.
Did you give it to everyone?
In some parts.
Continue.
Our meeting tonight.
Can't on.
No.
Two very specific things you gotta meet.
What do you need one of?
Clearly on, on Main Street, there are. So Andrew, I'm all in favor of doing something, Andrew, Leslie, about hen hooves.
Okay.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Chairman, a special meeting. We have to post, so it would be Thursday, we have an N P E D C meeting.
Yes.
Friday, the sixteenth.
This Thursday?
This weekend.
What time, six?
And, and over there, right? There's the little one over there.
When is that holiday? Is it next Monday, the nineteenth?
Yes, Martin Luther King Day. Yeah.
Do you want to have a meeting after the N P E D C or around?
We, regarding what, pray tell.
To go over this, I mean, if you, if you're all just totally familiar with, I mean, if you're totally comfortable with this, but if you want to look at some maps and.
I don't wanna have all this stuff sometimes, I mean, it's gotta be later next week.
Well.
Well, all right, all right, stop and repeat what you just said, Andrew. Are you, are you, are, no, I asked Andrew to come, okay. I think what he said is, are you all comfortable with proceeding ahead with this, with what you have before you tonight? Or do you need to have a special meeting to drill further into some of these things? Is that what I heard you say, Sarah?
Well, the hospital, you know what you're doing with the hospital, right? And then the Malcolm properties, you only think of, sort of, of all of them in here.
Well, it will be a, it will be like the airport article.
Yeah.
It'll just say the three properties into the three districts that we're talking about.
What's the smallest district?
Ten, our ten.
I still think, given, again, given that there's only, there's a problem on South Shore Road now at times. Because there's only one way out, and all the building that went on back there. I think it's very dangerous to put something that, that.
Can I simplify, can I simplify this conversation?
So I don't know if I'm comfortable not seeing that.
Can I simplify this conversation? Out of everything you've seen outside of that one thing, are you good to go? Because if it's just one thing, maybe we can do this after the N P and E D C meeting.
I think they've got the apartment thing good.
Will she have time to get it done by then?
It's not everything, it's just one thing. This is what we're, that's what I'm asking you, out of this entire packet tonight. Staff is asking you, are you good to go? You've identified the South Shore thing, is there anything else?
Well, they haven't finished some of them, but where they're going.
What else do you want, okay.
They're fine. I'm okay with.
You're good with everything in?
The ones that we haven't seen yet.
Okay.
Other than that one.
Right, Mr. Wool, are you good? And do me one other favor. I, I'd like to put the animal thing off for a year. I really do. I, I don't feel that's just, it's, it's so amorphous right now. Um, I, I'd like some more detail before we even think about entertaining that one. I. Anyways, yeah, I, I think I'd just like some more information before we get there. It's, it's too amorphous at this juncture. I'm sure it does. I'm not gonna question that. I just don't think this is, I think it's a little too amorphous right at this juncture, just to bless it. I really do.
Maybe this secondary, I mean, this tertiary thing in the department, that's gonna be really good.
So do you, excuse me, I'm sorry, do you, are you confident with where we are? We just really got one thing we need to focus on?
I would like you to look at the hospital. I think it's important for you to at least be familiar with it.
Do you want, do you want to raise just some basic things on Thursday night?
Yeah.
All right.
So we'll keep it, we'll keep it, we'll post it for after the N P E D C, and we'll just, to discuss, um.
Those two issues.
Yeah, and, and maybe just review the maps if we have them. I know Nathan's working on them.
It's up to you.
I, we're, I just don't want to get too ahead where you, there is still, you know, everyone should understand you still have the ability to review and modify these New York recommendations.
Correct.
Can we, can we talk about, was that one to the left?
Yes.
Can we just have a, we don't have to do those ahead of time, in earlier?
No, because those are citizen petition articles.
Correct. All right, we good?
Anything we've missed, but.
No, I think that's, that's.
Okay.
Now, as long as, it's like I said, as long as you guys are comfortable with, with the production schedule here. I, I, I think.
I want to be confident when I go to the selectman on the twenty-first, that you all feel comfortable with the articles that you're putting there. That's my goal.
And I hear that loud and clear, and I would, you've heard, Ms. DeVors is there. This is last chance, boys and girls. I'm not hearing anything, so you have our vote of confidence.
Okay.
From three members of this board.
Thank you.
It's on vacation. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I can't, I can't guarantee about the two members that aren't here, I'm sorry. But you've got, you've got the majority of the three saying yes. Okay? Good? Anything else before this board? That sounds like a plan. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, guys.
You're gonna bring it back, all right? I don't, just ask.
It's up to you guys, if you guys want to sign one.
What, what do you need, supervisor?
So you guys, it's up to you.
I, I think.
You do now?
I was hoping they would.
Oh.